Gonna start recording this, but you need a couple minutes to be transitioning on the second session. Thank you. Before I call the age order, I'd like to just acknowledge the fact that Peter Lyttle, longtime moderator for the time to social time meeting, passed away last January, but like all things COVID, everything gets mixed up and everything that postponed. So for Lord's specialty, I'd like to let you know that a memorial service will be held on Friday, October 15th. At 10:00 AM, his service will be at First Territorial Church. And his children, Ben Lyle, Javi, Rin, Brady, and Doug invited to a reception after ceremony in Rice Mall. Peter was not just moderated for 19 years, he was also a member of the County Conservation Committee. He was a member of the Citroen Historic Society and then is self-shore fisheries. He was also a teacher and well-loved person who reduced his obituary. He's clearly a great guy and, you know, just want to let the children know that he kind of appreciates everything with regards. So with that said, I'd like to call the age order. Do I hear information to accept agenda? Room by Miss Karen?
Oh, sorry.
Second by Mr. Danny Hall.
Can I just add something about Peter? So Peter would put me on the advisory panel about 12 years ago. And he was just, he was a great moderator. He brought no attention to himself. He ran the meeting well, which we respected. And really kept the meeting on track and let people say what they had to say. Well, I always respect the other things. So I know he was over a year, I don't know.
Okay.
Almost a year ago. So he was a great asset with this town.
Is he being the moderator of the time meeting right now? Yeah, he's right. What it's like? Now we're here to discuss vote acceptance of a donation of 11,000. Oh, Watkins, I'm sorry. Were there any Watkins? A lot of people, but no Watkins. Okay. Discuss vote acceptance of the donation of 11,400 Yawls to the Maslow Beady, when the haze first of director. And my CJ has come in with her.
My pleasure. Happy reason for the most part. But to introduce Barbara Alger, who is the sister of Joanne Papendrea, who also did pass away. Only in the of 2020. She's also here representing her brother Rich as well. And their donation to the Senior Center from the proceeds of an amazing showing in art sale that we can see some of them based in the eyes. If you introduce Barbara, if you would like to.
Would you like to say a few words? I know your sister was incredibly talented artist.
She was. If you live in Citroen, you can see her artwork somewhere. You weren't looking.
Well, my brother Rich and I are very pleased that we were able to make this donation to the Senior Center honoring Joanne. Because the center was a very important cultural site. And she taught art classes there for 20 years. And she was, she was a Citroen resident for 52 years. Very active in the community. And Rich and I are very appreciative that we were given the opportunity to hold this exhibit at the Brimstone Center, which is just beautiful.
Well, I understand the paintings and artwork were sold to those who wanted to purchase it.
Oh, the tribute, I'm sure it was.
Many, many visitors.
Yes, beyond our expectations.
We only friends, students, people that didn't know necessarily, but you love her work. It was, it was amazing.
And we're so grateful for all the help we had. Many very helpful and wonderful people, especially Zinda. It was just a joy working with her. And she was just so helpful and supportive throughout the whole exhibit leading up to it. And we're just so appreciative. Thank you.
Well, we're looking forward to, of course, using the money to extend Joanne's memory and in different ways supporting funding. Some of the arts, obviously, and a particular program that we need funding for that everyone loves, Art with the Mind, that we have monthly. But some other art programs and then hopefully some meditative settings and environments throughout the center that could honor.
She would have loved to see. She would have loved the center. I mean, she was so looking forward to it being built. And so her memory will be honored there and we'll be very pleased.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Anyone else? Sure, I'm sorry. I feel lost. Same to what a wonderful way to memorialize your sister. And one interesting question, we do have sort of an art room, don't we, where we? We certainly have hallways or is there a way?
Oh, there is an art room, yes. And we have her portrait there, which will also have a great.
Okay, that is my question, whether or not she could also be memorialized as well. Great. Thank you very much.
I just wanted to again share a gift of the, I mean, it's such a heart, I mean, it's fantastic artwork, unbelievable. It's just such a great. So thank you for sharing her gift with us.
Well, her artwork actually has elevated our previous digs, if you speak, but now even better because we do still have some permanent art from doing at the center. As well as at home.
Yeah, just sorry for your loss and thank you so much for subbing forward here. Glad it's wonderful. Appreciate it.
Just very quickly, I mean, I can't think of a more appropriate way to launch the new center than to combine our contributions. And then even beyond that, with this donation, it was perfect way to welcome and honor those who have been so instrumental. And I just, anybody that went through with any of the seniors who were the last few decades that wasn't touched by her gifts of teaching as well as her artwork. Thank you so much for coming in and thank you for this. Which right motion, please. Move to accept Joanne's donation, family of Joanne, did you hear me? Hopefully I said that right. Wendy, Andre, Barbara Alger, and Richard Ben, did I say it? To honor the war. Joanne's memory to support further programming in the arts of the senior center and to create an environment that contributes to the wellness of all who visit.
Sorry.
Second, thanks. Don't you cherish that? Great appreciation. Thank you.
Thank you very much. One more comfortable things. Yeah, fire.
So exciting.
The re precincting.
Yes, they're going on.
Going through the annual.
Decennial?
Decennial, 10 years.
Census.
Yes.
This is a result of the census being done.
Correct. This is, this happens every 10 years on the decade, and I just wanted to give you a brief review. Before I give you the final map, which I'll be back on the 19th for your approval. Here's what happens. So every 10 years on the decade, US Census is sent to all households across the United States. Re precincting was done in 2011 after the completion of 2010 census, federal census. So Citroen will not be adding a precinct. The precinct boundary lines will change based on information that was provided back beginning in 2017 up until the census went out. That included population, new housing units, potential housing units, and those now under construction. So I've gone back and forth with the draft map. Couple of bound, they were pulling too much out of four down by the railroad tracks. You, and they were giving it to precinct two. They weren't taking into consideration there's a lot of marshland and the river and Eric Brook. So we went back and forth. So in late September, they sent me the final draft of the precinct boundaries, the blocks, which are squares within each precinct. And the block population numbers. And there's other necessary materials that I had to proofread and review. Now I've sent you the map with the precinct boundary lines, which are the dark black lines. And you can see the old, the colors reflect the old precincts. Minimal changes. So again, I asked the state, our members are not, you should have got a PDF I sent to Lauren.
Let me see, I have it. Send it back. And I can see that.
Looks like this?
Yeah, I can see enough. I just said all the writing, so that's what.
So you'll get a final map. You'll, you will get a final map.
I can resend you that.
This shows the before and after. So tonight, I just wanted to know if you had any questions. They gave me two options for help on this. I chose option A, technical assistance from the Secretary of Commerce Office. I'm not an engineer. I know our resources are tight and we're all busy. Option B was a municipality that solely be responsible for creating a legal and technical compliant map. So no. So the state has done it. I've worked with them. And it needs your approval. And so I just want to know if you have any questions on it. I have to have this voted on and submitted by October 31st. The final map and precinct lines are effective December 31st. And you asked why? I asked why. Our, our numbers are so close in differentials between precincts. I said, why are we bothering with this? I don't see the need because we have less than 4,000 people in each precinct. That's, you can't go over that. We're like 32 at the most. And then there's like 100 people, 125 differential between precincts. And they said, oh, because we have to do it every 10 years. So it's so hard. I'm like, really? So anyhow, what happens after December 31st with these numbers is it goes to the state for possibly changing the congressional districts. Which is huge. That doesn't have anything to do with this. We're just doing the local re precincting. Every voter will have to be notified in writing that the precinct has changed. So I've asked the state to help get me those addresses of precincts that have changed. So I just wanted to know if you had any questions before I send the final map for the 19th. Yes, actually, I thought you had it. That's the largest. The largest precinct we have right now by about 120 people is precinct one. See, this is small on maps. I wish you had to do that. So the red one here is precinct one. The green one is precinct three. And if you would have precinct four with no mark around, okay? So they were taking a lot of, you know, little movement. So if you see here, see the red one and precinct one? It left, this is in the numbers, this is going to be over here. You can see the changes. They're not that major.
So can I, how do I get in? Practical now that someone's already had a vote of precinct possibly. What are your donations, are there? Is this got anything to do with us getting one representative for the state versus two?
So, no, the representative for precinct three stays the same. And if you notice, thank goodness, there's no precinct changes to three. That's the only precinct that isn't changing its boundary. And I also have, I'm going to be sending you the legal description of each boundary. By First Parish Road, West Leones. I just proved that today and the boundaries match with that, what the final map is because I wanted to double check it. So I'm on the same page as the state. So it doesn't have any ramifications for representatives. But it may eventually, if they take all the numbers from this area, Citroen will have it all other. If the congressional district might change.
All right. But essentially, at this point.
It's just.
At this point, it's just, we're trying to get like the.
It's the boundaries. Yeah. Yeah.
She gets chopped up.
Oh, I was in two. Now I'm in five. I would be so confused when I go to.
I have a very quick question. So that's the first question. What's the process for, for, you know, informing?
Be by now. There'll also be something on the website for everybody. I'll probably post a new precincting map on the web. Well, I as well posted on that. So you can see your new streets, where your street is. Yeah, I have. They have to be notified by map.
And is, I see this correctly, that precinct two is pushed.
To five.
It pushes them six along?
It could, yeah.
Well, it looks like almost like Ocean Side, half of Ocean Side.
Part of it, yes. And then they have. I think I did. Okay, it's not. This is the final one. Oh, it's so small. So, yeah, it's time. I wish I had a, we should have done a. Four has pushed over into two a little bit. And then precinct, sorry, two has pushed into one. And then very little changes in five, six, and definitely no changes in three. Very little changes in five and six down by the ocean.
We don't have representatives on government.
So, no, I thought you meant skate wrecks.
No, no. We don't have representatives on government. So we don't need to fight for each other over who's bringing.
Correct.
Precinct.
Correct. Guess who's correct.
Streets and who's the correct streets and who's got a move.
Thank goodness. Yes.
It will be. Yeah. Okay, I won't go in two weeks, but the state is going to have their, their, their precincts, but state federal.
Yeah, they be, yeah, they'll have to have, well, we'll submit this by the end of October with your approval. I'll send you, I'll send the certificate that I have to send into them along with the map, the language, the block numbers and population information. And I'll be back here on the 19th for that. And I'll send it right off to the state and then they'll give you the list of the address and precinct changes. And then we go from there. Who's going to help you get these addresses? I drove around 10 years ago to Breeze. And we went to Ronnie Shon's and took a left. And I looked on the right side of the street and I said, what's that house number down to Branch Street? All those numbers have to get notified. Nobody, it was insane. I said, I can't. So I asked them to help us with that, with GIS.
Okay. Makes sense. Yeah. Use technology.
Any of the technology.
No, no, thank you.
Okay. Thanks very much for your time. Have a good night. Tell me that.
Yes. We have a member of the Coast Guard here that's running agenda. And maybe he should have been on Watkins. No, he's Mr. Dever. He's going to be. Okay, I just wanted to make sure that he says something. I couldn't have missed him.
Purposeful. Oh, yeah.
All right. We'll move this along. We have two applicants for the Veterans Services Advisor Council. The gentleman in the uniform, is that the lead, answer rank, sir?
So captain.
Captain.
Yes.
Captain Dever is here. Would you like to come up and?
Sure. So please call me Mark. Good evening, everyone. Should I stand, sit? Okay. So this is my first town meeting, so very excited. I'm not going to, although I can certainly not address why the patient situation is open, is staying open. That wasn't part of my discussion, but there's a two o'clock yesterday afternoon. We're told that it's going to officially stay open. So that's, that's great news.
Well, I have to say, on behalf of our time administrator, he led the charge on this. He was extraordinary in getting every town around us to rally. Not only that, he turned up the most media that I've seen in a really long time and event. And so I think without him picking up on that, that it was going to happen, it appeared in the federal register, 14, I believe. And once he found that, he was on it. And he really did marshal a lot of people to get that done.
Well, he did an extraordinary job.
Yeah. He didn't catch any others. So he's a wonderful representative for our community and I want to thank him for bringing that up.
Thank you.
So, Cal, explain yourself.
Sure. So my name's Mark Dever. I, we moved here in 2007. So I live behind Walroes on Judge Cushion Road. And I have three boys in high school, twins that are sophomores and one that's a freshman. So that's pretty exciting. They're all obviously competed for hockey, JV, certainly lacrosse and also baseball. Been part of the community very long time. I've been a volunteer coach in this South Shore Seahawks program. To baseball, to lacrosse as well. So actively in the community. Just last year, I had my team volunteer for Shipshape Day to get the beautification committee as well. So I think we collected roughly 30 to 40 bags of trash, which was pretty exciting. So it motivated them not to throw trash up, right, when they become seniors. But what I would say is being part of this opportunity to give back, our veterans deserve our very best. Education, everything from medical care, healthcare, housing, to obviously burial rights at the end as well. So I think the full gamut from them serving our country, they deserve our very best. And I think I'm uniquely qualified to come here and represent the town. To serve and provide and volunteer my time to give back to the community and help those veterans that some aren't actively willing to come forward and ask for help. I've done a run to home base for now eight years. I've raised over $10,000 PSD. So there's different components that I truly understand, PSD as well as the active veteran who doesn't understand how he can obtain services and help them do the VA applications. So education, housing, everything from medical to dental. So I think that's critically important. So being a conduit, being the catalyst to help that person, you know, advance their, their lives in certainly a very respectful way. And so that's why I'm here tonight.
Well, thank you. Four maybe questions. Mr. Kim?
Just, thank you so much for coming forward. I believe I was at the meeting with Chief of Traffic Walroes and Rex. And I have to say, he was one of the most prepared and he done his homework, had a real action plan to how he could address the concerns he brought to the meeting, which is wonderful. So he very, that kind of extension of detail in this, we get back to him.
Thank you.
Yeah, couldn't get a better question. Literally, great fan of him and very active, high energy, attention to details, all the people were before in this committee and I think we were spectacularly done.
Thank you.
For getting involved.
That's all right. Phil, not much. You have a great resume, you know, all the work experience as well as phenomenal. So you're quite impressive, Captain. So maybe you're a terrific asset to the committee and especially if we focus on PTSD, I think that would be great. Provide some good services to our veterans as well. So thank you because certainly I'm on the plate, I can say, for your work and thank you for volunteering. It's really appreciated.
Thank you.
I would have, I would have followed that, but it is true. Thank you for stepping forward. It is. Still important for us to have folks like you. It's fantastic. So, thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate your.
It was kind of the joint committee for a while, but in the past few years, they've been very active. So I think it's great to have someone like you to join them because they've really done wonderful things over the past few years, especially so. Thank you.
So what are the next steps?
So there's two openings, is that correct?
Yes.
Two openings, yes.
Two handles. And two key ones. And we have Joe Kelly, who's the chair here this evening.
Okay. Joe Kelly, would you like to say something?
Well, thank you for recognizing the last two years. We certainly have had some good things come, happen with Citroen with veterans. We're looking forward to Veterans Day. Got a full day planned at the Citroen Senior Center. And then we have a breakfast. We're going to do another breakfast this year in December, December 7th, for other. So we're looking forward to that. And Ma?
Yes.
We have a meeting on the 13th. Next Wednesday, so that's next. About 1:00 in the morning at the.
Go for it. Welcome away. Thank you.
He's a little volatile. This is how he's not taking no for an answer after.
That's right.
In order to respond to Mr. Kelly's question about next steps, more of the voting this evening, don't notify your wedding tomorrow.
Okay, fantastic. Before the 13th, though, right?
Yeah. And then one day you're pointing, which I'm sure they will. You'll have to come in and get sworn in with the tablet, but we'll explain.
Okay, fantastic. Well, thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
So next we have, what's your first line watching?
P D N.
Hello.
Yes, ma'am. Sure, Christopher Lusardi. I live at 82 Greenfield Lane. I am an eight-year veteran of the Marine Corps. Did he use active duty? One of those was torn Iraq in 2004. I was going to buy property there, but the real estate got down, so I kind of decided to focus on this guy. But all kidding aside. All kidding aside, I primarily lived in Newton for the last 13 years. I moved down here in 2019, so I've been over here just over two years. I was going through some family stuff and moved down here. My wife is going through cancer. Unfortunately, passed away last year, so we wanted to come down to the water. We've always been a big fan of Citroen Marshall area. We chose Citroen and we're very glad we did. So what I used to do in previous years was I was always involved in my community. When we came down here, my wife was taking a turn for the worse and COVID hit, so my ability to get involved in the community is obviously what wasn't able to happen. So I'm also the full-time firefighter in the city. And I also serve as a program director for the Massachusetts Fall Heroes, which is a nonprofit, the grass region nonprofit. We started in 2010 to build the nation's first memorial for a state fallen. So we were able to accomplish that and dedicated it in 2016 as a seaport. Everyone told us it would take 20 years to this, about six. So we're very, very proud of that. If you're ever in Seaport, please go by and see that memorial. It is something else. There are a lot of people going to visit that. It does a lot for the families. Within that, we'll program director Maslow Heroes, which is what you would call technically a side gig, which actually I have two full-time jobs, two firefighting and Maslow Heroes. Doing a array of things for veterans and Gold Star families. Also, having met Joe Kelly, who I've known for a very long time now, along with his entire family. And unfortunately, 300 plus other Gold Star families that the state has. Within that programming, I do a lot of different things. Some of the stuff, similar to what we, Captain said, left.
Be careful. It's not.
It's probably, it sounds like he had a lot going on with the kid. So I have one daughter myself. She's here at Kate's and it's great. She's actually going to be joining a little second coming from the soccer clinical field, so we'll wait and see what happens. But I've done a lot of service providing for veterans and Gold Star families, not to the extent of disability stuff. Actually, that's what the PSOs are, one of their best assets is. I love the fact that Citroen even has a Veterans Advisory Council. Most cities and towns don't. From all the cities and towns that I visited in the state, they usually have your typical VSO that has about six other jobs, liquor license guy, zoning, you know, they usually multitask a lot of different things. I love that this town incorporates a committee to work hand in hand with the VSO. So I look forward to working with them and bringing whatever experience I have and also learning more. I think education is life and I think you can come into something and say, oh, I already know how to do that. I'd love to learn more about what Citroen does. I've been very impressed thus far with the amount of support that the two divisions, et cetera. And one is a purple heart community and I'm just glad I had a lot to do with that. And I was able to meet some of the other members of the board and I attended a formerly meeting a few months ago and it just seemed like a great group and something we're very interested in doing and also looking back to making.
Well, thank you for coming in, especially on the family service next.
Oh, I'm sorry. No, I appreciate it. Thank you.
He's a great neighbor. He's my neighbor. He's a great guy.
Thank you.
Oh, this is like a fan club here tonight. Mr. Quintero.
I just, we, I have no question. We're so amazed. I, we are, just feel so lucky in the town to have so much support. So really, I.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
I'm just like everyone else, but I appreciate it.
No, I agree with someone, just to listen to your experience, your education, so. I've asked, your questions asked, but I'm sorry for your loss. We're happy that you can assist me, so we'll be able to have a couple of moments.
Yeah, not much to add. Love your energy, love your experience, love the fact that we've done this in other communities. You'd be a great reference over there. You're already engaged in the committee or gone, meet people, you can't ask anything before that. The committee's doing spectacular. I'm the lead and I just stay out of the way. And Kelly and Jim Stewart, rest of them, really, they've taken the program, you know, watching, so we're just looking for all the rest of things that want to be done. Thank you for all.
Yes, sir.
Liz Campbell. I'll clean up. Ditto. I tell you exactly what I was going to say. This committee has really gone on fire in the last couple of years and your leadership and the team that's there now have been always seeing. Take it back by tires.
Thank you. On the application, I just put combat veteran. I did not attach a resume to it or interview, but I do have one available. If you guys would like to see a resume for something official, I can make sure we go ahead.
Also.
I think you guys have enough going on. Here's a resume, so.
So, Mr. Kelly, want to reel him in?
Oh, I already reeled him in.
You can officially.
Kelly, great guy for the council, great guy for Citroen. So, yeah, a lot of resources.
Joe said, go get your name signed up by Sunday. Joe said, go get your name signed up by somebody.
Well, I can say that, uh, situ with volunteers is like, Mr. Darren Garrison, who is the town where all the children are above average. We have all these volunteers who are above average. So thank you so much.
My pleasure. Thank you for calling along. We appreciate it. Thank you for all the speaking.
Thank you for having me.
Thank you. So, what would you mean? License violation. Incidents, right?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Goodbye, guys. I missed the last thing I had.
Sorry. So would you just like to give a brief description of what happened?
Sure. Um, so under the rise of true police department, in addition to my role as a patrol sergeant. I'm also the alcohol compliance officer at the town situation. On Friday, August twentieth of this year, I conducted an underage alcohol compliance check. Prior to the check, I contacted group sponsors, it's a true matter. And informed her of the upcoming compliance check. Prior to that date, she put out a publication notifying people that they comply. In this compliance check, I used a twenty-eight, twenty-year-old underage male. His appearance is not often at all. The underage male did not carry any identification on him and the only money he was given was, only money he had on him was the twenty dollars that I gave him. Approximately twelve thirty PM, he entered the River Shed Restaurant at seventeen New Brookway. I remained in the, uh, in the cab. I observed the underage male enter the restaurant. Approximately ten minutes later, a pair of the underage male exited the restaurant. The underage male entered the vehicle and informing that he had asked for and was given a bottle of Bud Light beer. Explaining to me that he walked into the restaurant and approached the bar. The bartender asked him what he liked and he asked for a bottle of Bud Light. The underage male was not asking any identification. Once the beer was placed in front of the underage male, per my instructions, he walked out of the restaurant and left the beer on the bar. The underage male did not consume any of the beer at all. The underage male gave me a physical description of bartender, waited all the information. I entered the restaurant, identified myself to a manager by the name of Kevin Rakes. I explained to Kevin what had transpired and I identified the bartender in question. The manager was extremely cooperative.
Would you like to tell us? Yeah, yeah. Um. I'm not going to sit there and say it happened, it happens. And I, I've had a liquor license for ten years. I've never had this happen. This is a brand new thing. I don't want to make it sound like I'm making excuses for my staff or anything, but I think I would like to tell our side of the story. Um. We were kind of in a perfect storm of things where, um, we were having a bereavement gathering for one of our. Our cook's, um, family members and it was early in the day and, um, it was just. And again, not with excuses, excuses. It was assumed that this. Individual was part of the. The family gathering and. I think just the way that I've been up outside, I've talked to my staff, but this is a very important thing for me. This falls on me. Um, I, this is Elaine. She's my manager, kind of director of operations for, uh, three of the restaurants. And, um, you know, we sat down with our bartender and we spoke with her and she, the bartender that this. Happened with is a very experienced bartender, someone that I have a lot of confidence in. And I think it was kind of in a perfect storm of just like COVID. Like, we haven't had large gatherings and it was just sort of like, nobody else was in the restaurant. I lived in this bereavement. I think she just assumed it was. Part of it. And, you know, did she make the right decision? Absolutely not. But that's kind of where things transpired.
Um, I'd just like to add, um, I, they, we literally don't hire anybody unless they have a tip certification in hand. So it's kind of like part of our, our go-to, it's in our entry process is, um, do you have a tip certification? Nobody is hired unless they have one. We don't take anybody on board unless you have a copy of a current tip certification. This particular bartender is tip certified. Um, so unfortunately she did. Again, it was like the perfect storm situations for an underage person to come in and try their chance at getting a beer. Um, she had assumed that everybody in the restaurant at that time was part of the group for event, which was. A member of staff, which is one of her chefs at the River Shed. So she kind of. Put everything together in a, you know, ten, twenty-second. You know, moment and was like, he's got to be part of the party. I'm going to start from a beer, you know, and obviously it wasn't the right decision. It was completely the wrong decision. But, you know, she made a judgment call and it was the wrong one. Um, unfortunately, I would also like to say. This past summer, we probably collectively on a monthly period had anywhere between seventy-five to a hundred. Um, false identifications taken in by our staff and caught by our staff. It's something that they always do. And it's something that I, um, if that's my thing, when people say, what's your thing? That's my thing. It's like. Are they hardish? Are they tip certified? Like, I want some paperwork. So. Unfortunately, again, I do think that bartender is very qualified bartender, has made great judgment calls in the past. Unfortunately, this was one that just managed to sit under the radar. And that's obviously our bad. So, but that we apologize.
And we've spoken to her and we've talked about protocol and we've put in new protocol, even more like stringent protocol. And, um, yeah, I guess that's all we can say. It happens. It's. Not a denying experience, just, you know, not proud of it. Like, I, I've tried to do everything right. I. Known a lot of you guys for a long time. I think you know that.
Thanks for coming in, um, Karen. Yep, we do take this really seriously. You know, I say this, I don't know if you watch. The hearings last week, but, you know, we're pretty. Serious about meeting the first final sheet. So even though we haven't had it, we still take it seriously, unfortunately, every town. Um, not to have a lot of activity, but I'm really creating, and I think a lot of that is. But testimony to this group's standards that we put places in community as well as any of our staff is followed. So. Um, I do appreciate that you've identified over seventy-five hundred. Illegal IDs, illegal false IDs. Um, we utilize this software, I would imagine, at your bar to identify those.
Well, primarily we have a lot of staff who've been with us since day one. We came aboard at fourteen. All the way up to the age of twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, and they're very familiar with the town of situ and their, their fellow. People they went to school with. So they primarily will already recognize them before they even sit down and receive. The policy is you have to card everybody if they're under age and that's just how we operate. So.
Under forty.
Yeah.
Under forty.
Yeah, so they are pretty diligent about it.
Um, just for you, Teri, your measurement. So, that you put in, uh, new protocols. What are they?
I mean, we, it like, there's no making decisions about where you think the day is going, like. Bereavement, no bereavement, like everyone just to be, it's just, it's not like a. That's the policy now. And I've done it across the board, all three of my restaurants, because I also take this very, very seriously. Like, this isn't. Like, this is other people's lives. It's our livelihood. It's the staff's livelihood. Like, it's not something that takes lightly. So. I understand and I actually appreciate that you guys are stringent about that because, you know, we all have children and like, you know. Everyone wants it to happen. So.
I'm, I'm curious, I don't know. What does this a day? Financially. So it was a Friday. What's that? What's the hit? The range?
I just want you to go with it. So, yes.
Yeah.
Thousand, ten thousand?
I don't want to talk about like numbers. I think it's just, it's, it's hard. It's hard. I, you know. As we all know, and I'm not like, we're, we're not here to talk about like COVID and what we've been through, but like. You know, it's like we have, there's staffing issues and stuff like that. We, I had to close for a lot of days. I had a chef that didn't have. The, the bereavement check that we have, have talked about. Hasn't had a vacation in six years. We took a honeymoon, so I had to close for like ten days because he was gone for three weeks and I had to close for Monday, Tuesday and, you know. It, it is what it is. But again, like you, you're gonna, you're gonna determine the outcome here and I will, you know.
I mean, I'm, I'm just trying to, as part of this too, and I, I do take it seriously. My issue is, what's the open goal here? Which places around town are concerned about? You know, might be a problem. Oh, there's been a run of places that. Problem area. Someone is tip certified, catching fake IDs and there's. What else?
Well, if I can interject real quick, I will tell you right now, my business philosophy is I never want to be people's last stop. Because I'm responsible. Like I said, I'm a mother, I'm a business owner. I don't want to be people's last stop, which is why I close the bar early. I don't need to have people drinking Bud Lights until two o'clock in the morning. I, I don't want to be that person. If anything, I want people to have an amazing meal. They want to have a grabber number drink. They go home and we close things down by the ten o'clock. That's just my, my philosophy in life. And that, if that, you know, adds to any of my responsibilities, like. Shouldn't show a test for that, like, yeah. You know, we close earlier than a lot of places.
Since coming out of COVID, I mean, obviously it's been, it's, you know, it's been crazy and I can't believe I made it through COVID and here we are, but. Um, it's, it was insane. So we literally reevaluated everything. Obviously, we keep our standards. As our standards, you know, everyone has to be tip certified. You've got to be educated. You've got to know what you're doing. We do a lot of training, whether it be in alcohol. Food, just how we operate. There's a lot of, you know, we don't just bring people in and they're on the floor. You go through a pretty strict training process with one of our trainers and it's a five-day process and you do a test and you. You pass the test to be able to serve the public. Like, we don't just take it as you come in and you hand out beers. You come in and you. You take a, you know, an order for a cheeseburger and a beer. Like, you have to assess the situation, know who you're talking to. I mean, there's, there's situations on a daily basis where we have somebody who's either celebrating COVID or celebrating on a, you know, chemo or. There's constantly situations where people are celebrating or situations where people are coming medicated and you have to make a split decision. In the moment. So we're always trying to educate our staff to be able to know those situations and go get a manager. We always have a manager on duty. You know, sometimes they'll work twelve-hour days just because, again, with staffing. We have to have people in place when alcohol is being served, that there's somebody responsible. There. And also the bar staff, I have to say, for the most part in the River Shed and Citrus, have been there for a long time. We don't have any staff turnover. We were lucky through COVID that a lot of people like stayed with us and, you know, hunkered down and we made it through and they made a lot of money and. You know, but again, it's always worth the responsibility, even with the, the takeout alcohol. I mean, that was a huge curveball thrown at all. You know, restaurants, like we were horrified by it. Still are horrified by it. We don't advertise it. We don't want to hand out alcohol for people to go. Huge and it's such a great area. And how can you make a judgment call when somebody pulls up to pick up a takeout and you're supposed to. Know how they are by looking at them through a car window. So.
Five deep and you give them a drink to take home when they got up from River Shed.
Yeah, even though we won't give them a shot, you know, but there's so many things on a constant basis that it's just, it's, you're always one of these. You know, and that was that day, unfortunate day. It happened to be, you know, somebody went in who, you know, was looking for us to make that mistake and. We made it. So.
I'm sure, um. So clearly, you take it seriously. You take it seriously. You take the responsibility. I see you there. Um, we have well-established, it's just like every place. So your challenge is the same thing that it was told me for the last fifteen years. I think we have that this person is, you know, the event here doesn't matter to me, whether you're twenty in a police unit or twenty at a, at a party. Serve. Um, we take this seriously. I will say last time, uh, we were last meeting in two groups in here as well. And in the past, we penalize people pretty hard about it. But Andy made some good points last time. It stuck with me that we really want, we're, we're not looking to penalize you financially or penalize you, uh. Calling out kind of socially, everything like that. What we want is, we just don't want underage kids served. And we, we want to see what, what every establishment is going to do to help make that, that.
Yeah.
Um, so I know you have a card system in there, you know, I would hope that you can use it in every situation. I was confused by the answers that I got. And just hear about what, other than telling the bartender, don't do this again, you know, what, what can we do to help make. Make it so that it doesn't happen. You don't want to serve underage people. We don't want to serve. You know, what, what's the next step for these establishments to make sure it doesn't happen? Because every time we do one of these things, somebody gets, somebody gets caught. I mean, you haven't, you've passed all the ones before. But unfortunately, you're an establishment where, well, this establishment where younger people like to go. You know, you probably wouldn't have this set, this problem with your other establishments in order to try to tell, but this one.
Yes, I know on that one, but, um, I think it's, uh, to answer your question, I think it's exactly what you guys did. I mean. That's, that's how it happened.
Yeah.
You know, and, um.
I, I guess what we, what I'm looking for, I think some of the board is like, what do you think we can do to help you? Right? So Andrew had a great idea last time. How can we proactively do these stain operations? Where maybe the police aren't involved, or they are involved, but it's not really trying to catch you, they're trying to teach you.
Right.
And how you can find out what's going on in your establishment. I have kids, I, I have kids that have grown up in this town and now will have to drink. You know, they probably drank at the River Shed when they were nineteen or, or whatever.
Probably not.
Um, but, but we know kids, right? You know, they're, they're going to try and we have to be able to catch them and stop them.
Right.
So how can we get established, good established? Right? You, the bill of, Martin, you know, these are all great. Cornerstones of our town. What's the sort of program that we can put in place so that we can help you run your operation better? And that's what I think, I think that's what you were talking about.
Yeah, I mean, the stakes are so high.
Right.
But if you're, there's a question.
Yeah.
Is this bartender really doing great? Or I, I don't know. But if, if now it's going to be. I'd like to, if there's some way, like, I really want to make sure that this testing, to me, that's it too. It's like, I don't want to be the hell of a friend. I just want to be a partner.
Like, like I think just off the gate, like use it as a training moment and say that, you know, this is. This is a trainable, a teachable moment that these things happen and they're going to happen again. And, you know, like, you're going to. You're going to lose your job. Like, if you, this is like a partnership, you know, like, I, I'm hiring you and Elaine's hiring you to trust. You know, with representing us and if you don't follow the protocols, it's kind of like. You're wearing non-slip shoes in the kitchen. Cause if, you know what I mean? It's like that sort of thing. Like, it's just, it's just got to be a mandate. And. If she's in there and sees someone not part, someone, well, they're going to lose their job. Like, we just need to be a lot more stringent on that and use this as like a teaching moment. Yes, that's the best thing I can come up with. And I'm a very open-minded person. So if there's any other ideas, I.
Yeah, well, the thing is, the, the test can't only be once every two or three years. That's great. Because when, when that happens, then we. Make the assumption that it's happening.
Right.
More than just.
Of course.
You know, so I think that's kind of the program that Andrew had talked about the other day. If we went and, and established some program where we're going to your establishments and saying, hey. We're doing this, you pay attention to it, right? It's not us trying to get you, it's us working with you to try and get these rules to be followed. And I think that's where we are kind of going to try to figure out how we can establish that.
Maybe we set up our own stain within our establishment, like on a weekly basis and we, you know, and that's how we sort of do the quality control. And we know, we know enough people in town that, you know, and that, that might be something that we implement as part of our protocol. I mean. I can say one thing, being in the restaurant business, especially with being in COVID, it's like you have to like just roll with the punches and you've got to adapt. Adapt or die, right? Like, so I think that might be something we can talk about.
Yeah.
I think actually it'd be really, really, really wise to do something like that.
Thank you for being here. And it's amazing. I have a different take on this than my colleagues. Um. Is I feel, you're, you can, you do your job very well. Your job is the natural. Your job is to protect that license so that your business doesn't get penalized. And, you know, obviously it's the first time you've been here, so you do a pretty good job of that. Um. Our job is to, uh. Oversight that process. And when there's an infraction, as there has been, it's our job to make sure it is punitive. Because it's not, I mean, and we can talk about what that means. Because if it's not, I mean, and we can talk about what that means, that um, if it's not, then we're not reinforcing how important it is to the community. That's my take on it. I think our public safety officers, you know, they know how to, to do this, they know how to, they, they know the boxes they have to check to make sure that they're complying with the law, that you're complying with the law, and that we can do our job to maintain so a high. So I think the systems are in place, I think we did, we learned a lot this, this particular year that, you know, maybe there are things that the public safety officers can do to make sure that we're comfortable that the managers are doing their job, and I mean, Kira has articulated extremely well what her responsibility is internally. Um, I'm figuring it's us to tell her how to manage it, we want to ask those questions, we want to know that you're, you are taking it seriously, but let's listen back to the other conversations, that was a common thing. Um, none of us want to harm a good, solid business constituent. Um, especially having come off this last year.
Yes.
Um, so, but I personally think that, you know, it is our responsibility to to look at the situation and meet at the appropriate response, um, not so much our um, if, if you see the new laws in this particular situation. Economic Development Partner, all the law, our job is to make sure that you guys are following, um, your licenses appropriately. Well, here's what I'd like to ask is, um, how does the nineteen-year-old look like their old four?
Like I said, I'm not here to make excuses and happen, you know?
I'm not saying, I'm just saying, we've heard that before too.
Yeah.
And I just understand that, I mean, there's a really difference between a nineteen-year-old and a forty-year-old.
There is.
Costume, which, get it on.
I mean, I get hard, I want to celebrate life, you know, I'm like, me too, pumped.
The car is kind of brochures, I don't care. Um, one of the other questions we have for the board was the issue of software um, that would enable you to know if someone's ID, I think that's a powerful, the ID is valid.
I'll be honest with you, when I bought the River Shad, and it was operating as the burger bar, they had that in place, and they had it in place, so you got to get discount on your insurance, and that failed us a couple times, we didn't take the ID, so.
They didn't take the ID?
They didn't, no, it was definitely a fake ID and it didn't register it. So I just, it's just not been my philosophy. This particular case is not about serving somebody with a fake ID, it's about not carding someone.
Right.
Um, so.
Right.
Um, you know, we're very focused on, like, knowing what to look for in a fake ID, um, which is why she said we confiscated seventy-five to a hundred in the last year, which is a lot, if you think about it.
Um, I want to give you just a little more.
Yeah, no, you can't really just destroy them.
Yeah.
You can't get rid of them, you know?
Yeah.
If we destroy them, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, no, we don't think.
No, we're supposed to take them away.
Okay.
Yeah.
But this was, this is a different, this is not a fake ID, this is, this is a lack of, you know.
And I have heard that from a lot of the younger kids that do work at River Shad, it's the same thing to go along with that, that they've used their fake IDs at other restaurants, and they've gone through the system where it hasn't come, so. And to me, that screams like, well, if we're going to invest this money in the software that really isn't going to work, well, we should literally just card people.
Right.
And then question the ID in, in question, and do our due diligence through that way. You know, it's old school, but it actually didn't work, it's like, when the computers write down, we handwrite everything, you know, same thing, it's like, just do the card somebody.
There's also, like, so much technology, I mean, obviously, I'm not, like, in the fake ID world, but like, there's so much technology now that I just don't, like, it's, someone's always one step, one step ahead, or, or, you know what I mean?
This is schedule, there's a, update is off with it, it's flawless, flawless, works perfectly. The name is kind of new right now, but I'm actually going through my inspections of all establishments, all premises, and all premises now, just alcohol licenses, I call them Vic licenses, so on and so on, so. I'm going to be dropping off paper, uh, you know, information to people to get. There are two establishments in town that have, I won't name them right now. But you can't put a fake ID in work.
Well, I'm very open to that, I think that's coming from, you know.
That's going to be my comment, is that I think it's just old software that some of those establishments are probably using.
Yeah.
And have those updated, but it's, it's a pretty old. Right? Do you want to discuss what? Well, I'd like to recommend that we be consistent in, in what we already applied, um, and it is a first time in the past five years. So I wouldn't want to be any more aggressive than the board was last week, we'll get two violations, just to be um, you know, I trust that, I will, I will, this to Sergeant O'Brien's suggestion to take a look at the new software, I do think it's an extra.
Okay.
Very good for protection for me. Um, first, you don't have to determine if you could allow a violation to occur. So I will make a motion, um, the board agree that public violation did occur, that River Shad's establishment, uh, August twenty. Sorry. Sir, my name is Tanya. Do you need to roll all the papers? No. All in paper? By five. Any close? On five zero, motion carries, a violation occurred. Penalty? But Mara's point, I agree that, you know, consistency is important, uh, and it's fair. Um, as I'm sure you know, a first violation under policy could be a suspension of up to six days. Um, that would be on weekends. Uh, we discussed this a lot the last couple hearings, that those are our recommendations. Um, but it's the board's prerogative to decide if that's, you know, those are, we just wanted to make sure we have guidelines in place to work out of. Um, and I would think that a one-day midweek would be consistent with what we we, uh, put there for the, uh, Millmark, which is a very similar situation, uh, no violations, prior violations of. As far as timing-wise, we would, I would think that we, I do need to attach, pardon me, the notices, I forgot on that piece. Like, if we were to stick a Wednesday, we need a couple of weeks anyway, we can make a couple of weeks. Um, I mean, I think if you do the same, let's do a top of our tape, if that's what you decide. Is that enough, though? Time for another?
Yeah, there's no time.
Okay. Oh, I thought we had to file things with the, um, ABC, and you wanted to appeal it, there's time. No? Is there? Oh, they have, they do have the right to, you know, with
the penalty imposed. You can always, like you promised on your question, you can set it so that it would be at least ten days things can be appealed after, when that period would run. You can do that, or you can set it at a different time if they appeal. I think it's probably easier and probably more fair to everybody to give the party a little time to, you know, get ready for this, you know? It's been all I think it's probably cleaner and easier to set it for a time after the ten-day appeal period would run.
So don't you ask the question? Yes, of course. What are your current hours of operation? I know they changed over, but probably due COVID.
Um.
We opened seven days in a week, what, what's your?
We are now, um, this week, we open, set back up seven days, um, eleven-thirty to nine midweek, and then eleven-thirty till ten on the weekends, with brunch starting at ten AM on Sundays.
Who needs to remember? Well, we, we push it on, we're going to keep it on Wednesday, and I have to take it to the twentieth. Does that make sense? Which is, you know, two weeks, count otherwise. Another motion. One more discussion.
Karen?
I mean, I, I mean, I we did the board a, this board vote to, um, suspend the liquor license for, um, the October twentieth, twenty twenty-one, um, the all alcohol alcohol liquor license held by the Great Company, and doing private secret businesses at the River Shad for one day on, uh, October twentieth. Second? So everyone is standing on, on paper? By, by zero, motion carries, do you need to roll all? No.
So just one, one last comment, so Sergeant, if there's any way that you can talk to the police department, see if there's any way, I mean, maybe you want to do more of these checks, but you want to collaborate with the business owners in town to to make sure that, that they're not serving minors, but, and then also, just everybody, you know, by doing more checks, if you're caught again, then it can't be that fluke, and that's why you know, the policies and timelines for this trip.
For sure.
I was doing a more frequent basis, yeah.
Then, then I understand, my last observation was that this was a private event, and it sounded like that's where the bartender got, you know.
It was a private store.
To make sure that, you know, the standard was applied for private.
For sure, absolutely. Absolutely. Yeah, a hundred percent, yeah, they are very right now.
Sergeant, can you just stay for one second, show? Just for the next item.
So our next unlisted is discussed vote request to stay suspension of the license for Village Market, Land Market.
I'm here, I think I'm supposed to be administrative, I'm not sure how this works, I know we had an hearing last week, but, come on.
I mean, he's basically here of the organization.
Yeah, I didn't.
Okay, well. His attorney said they're right. Yeah, that's why I wrote all the backup, and all I just wanted to be sure was that if he wanted to be here, or his attorney wanted to be here, they had the right to be here. And so, we simply are here to vote on whether or not we're going to to stay suspension. I, I think it's somewhat changing, uh, similarly, you can explain why, why to change, that if, if we, if we don't go to stay it.
If, if the way that particular violation came down, uh, we made a date certain, and it was appealed, and if you were to execute on that, and if they were found not to have been in violation, then it could potentially be in a situation where they may be looking to the town of some sort of uh, because it will have shut them down into private mode. Working and earning a living without any just cause. So it just seems that it might make more sense, and it's streamlined the process for everyone to be more consistent with the rest of this group of violations that are treated.
Do we have one of these things, they get processed by ABC? So, usually in their rules, it says two weeks. I haven't burned yet, but you?
I haven't, but it seemed, I, when I spoke to social council, it seemed a pretty loose guideline at this point, two to three weeks, so, they wouldn't commit any.
So you don't want to turn it, so.
I, I would be, um, hesitant to expect a decision based solely on what they're adding on their company at this point, because they, like, everybody else is about that.
Yeah, similarly, good, congratulations.
Anyone? Just a quick question, so if we are, we are for the stay, and they are found to be in violation, then, uh, will we be convinced to set in a date? Is that the way it would work? Have you seen this?
I, I think you can do it that way, or you could pick a date within a certain time period, like, two weeks after the date, it's whatever, it makes sense, and it seems that it will be that someone. Uh, it's really your choice whether you want to have them back in and have another discussion, or if you just want to make, you know, like, a Wednesday, which seems to be what you had, a couple weeks after.
Because the time I are feeling, you know, it doesn't go that way.
Yeah, I, I would suggest that there's probably not a good reason for an appeal, an ABC decision, unless there's something extremely egregious. And if you could say, so, all relevant appeals are taken, and if the board were to find that the ABBCC did something that you just felt, you had no choice but to appeal, you could have also stayed execution of the penalty. Okay.
All right.
Any questions?
Question, um, Sergeant, I mean, you know, one that was there on the evening.
Correct.
So, there was a little bit of discrepancy in the stories, but I just wanted to see, so, did the chief that came out say that they got asked what the birthday was?
Yes.
They did?
Yes.
Okay, the chief didn't know that.
Yes. Uh, instead of asking for an identification, the body will ask for a date of birth. Right?
Tell the truth.
Correct.
Which is where the
Correct.
Issue is.
Correct.
My question for this?
Yes.
I move the board to approve the request for MFJ Market, Inc., doing business as Village Market, that the one-day suspension of this package store, Ryan Wall License, scheduled for Wednesday, October thirteenth, we state many adjudication of the appeal. Part of the ABBCC for violations, suspension found, I'd like the board following hearing on nine twenty-one, twenty-one.
Second, second, so we, we amend that? May amend that question? Sure. Um, was you say that should the appeal fail, that the, um, the suspension rule occurs to Wednesday, two weeks after the this rule is resolved?
Just to add some quickly, if, if, I mean, if that fell on that date before Thanksgiving, that would be
Yeah.
Maybe, maybe, and, 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 you know.
Well, noted, okay, I was trying to say this in.
No, I know, I know, and I, I can act.
Okay, I withdraw my amendment, sorry. Second, someone is calling? All in paper? Um, I, five zero, motion carries?
Yes. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Next on our agenda. I'll discuss both settlement of the construction acres of Timeless City, we're settling our project, attorney Cynthia Amara, Tom House. We, we do an executive session agreement that's drafted, and signed by, and they all pay them the amount of money that we owe them for the project that they didn't cover. It includes one agreement about fixing things that needed to be fixed, uh, making sure that things are done according to the way they should have been done. And this won't cost the town more for any reason, it will cost the same amount of money for us to settle this, and, uh, if anyone wants to ask questions, oh, we just, we, like, we just had a quick session on it, so I don't know if the board has any more questions. Just that we, we got an additional five-year warranty on the project, so I think that's, um, what I'm asking.
If, if I can just, if you got an additional five-year warranty on the payment of the
Right, yeah. Yes, Chris Carshon, and do you identify the show?
Chris Carshon, nineteen structure, uh,
Capital.
Capital Planning Committee.
Thank you.
Sure. Uh, this was a capital project that came to us in one of these phases, was this, uh, uh, part of a specific phase, whether it could be totally or at the end of everything. Uh, is, is the project complete? I think the project is just about complete, I believe, this was a substantial completion invoice, this was one invoice, it's the last invoice, there's also a bunch of files that they have to complete and will complete on this. But my understanding is there are no more invoices.
And I'll speak. Wish you a positive. Sorry. So, we need to move, and we've got the board vote to renew the settlement agreement and mutual release between Vandal Construction Company and Timeless City regarding outstanding invoices related to the federal cemetery project, and to authorize the chair to execute the settlement agreement and mutual release on behalf of the board, a copy which was about, you know, your second, settlement's free, all in paper, uh, motion carries five zero. Next is to discuss both party application for being in circle, a four twenty-four, two sixty, Ray Ray, I'll cover their first, and Eric Calhoun. Hi. Okay, Elaine, somebody want to tell me who's there?
I am Mary Calhoun.
Okay.
Hi, I'm Mary Calhoun, my neighbor as well.
Do you want to tell us what you're doing?
Sure. So we are hoping to organize a neighborhood block party on, we've amended the application. So it's not going to start at 19 day glow circle. So we've moved houses by one and end a 32 day glow circle. We're basically going to just have some fun, fall activities, possibly pumpkin painting and bottom fire apples. We're going to have a bouncy house for the kids. We have a lot of kids, like new families in the neighborhood. So I think the average age is probably like five, five or six. So our kids are the same ages.
Super tenant likes to go home first.
They go to Jamen's.
That's good.
So yeah, we're, we talked to most of the neighbors. We did have one neighbor, we moved it because one of our neighbors just received it in her lots. We're moving to Port Hurley. But everyone's on board.
To one who wanted to receive.
Now, now we don't.
Any questions from the board? Nope. It's like everybody approves it in their, in their hotel. It's a nice quiet neighborhood.
Especially on the circle.
Move to approve a block party at 19 till.
19 to 32 days.
32 day to circle on October 24th, 2021, from 2:00 PM until 6:00 PM. The rainy day is on Halloween. I'll cover 31st. And maybe the department will do what's promised now too.
I don't see any of the audience of this, the jumping, right? Just to make sure.
I do think we do have a neighbor here, but.
Second, second one is current. All in favor? Five zero motion carries. If you're anxious to come in, then discuss vote special event application analysis of state crosswalk. October 7th to 8th, or virtual walk at number rock. October 10th to 17th. Johnson. Hello, Jamie, I think you were right. I, one of you guys said before. So you're looking to paint the crosswalk on the 7th to 8th?
But actually, yeah, so the, the event application, because it's a virtual walk, there's no gathering. So it's just people walk during that time and they'll post their activity. But what I did ask them about was we wanted to paint, actually the spot between the stop line and the crosswalk with our logo stuff and just kind of make the area festive and call attention to the event. So the office recommended that I ask for an event permit for the painting of the ground because we're going to give a please detail schedule. And that would be more than than the actual event.
Well, Andrew, I'll ask a question.
Your question?
Okay, crosswalks? Well, it's not, yeah, I just want to be sure. It's not, I have an updated diagram because I think my diagram is a little pretty.
Crosswalk, crosswalk questions about food, food closes. On that.
Yeah.
So the, the crosswalk itself actually has the hash cards. And then next to it, there's that, there's that white line. That's actually right at the stop sign. So it goes to stop line and then the crosswalk is beyond it. So the cars in the stop line, the stop sign are previous to the crosswalk. So we're not touching the crosswalk. So that's not going to be obscured. It's going to be that blank space about four feet by 18. That's the space side of the crosswalk. They did actually, they confirmed, they actually wanted to know if we could do it tomorrow and our artist can do it tomorrow. So if everything goes okay tonight, I'd have to send him a text and say yes.
That was my question is that's, that's been the biggest concern with the sort of renegade painting.
Oh, no, it's not for painting. It's that actually.
No, 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 I meant for public safety, right? You don't want to obscure the stop sign. You don't want to obscure the crosswalk. So this is regular street painting or what are you using? How long will it last?
So it'll wash off in probably a couple of, maybe in a week or two.
It's just temporary.
It's temporary. Yeah. And it's, the, the traffic in Homarock right now is pretty slow. So they're going to try and get out there at one o'clock. I have the detail ready for one to five. So then figure two hours of painting, two hours for it to dry and we'll be covered that whole time. And it won't, actually won't go across the entire road, the two lanes. So we should, we'll still have flow.
And is the logo, the Rock Your Heart, the one that's on the letter?
So it's, it's actually just like a blue green base and then they'll do all the pink tracks on top of it. And they'll put the, the lettering, Rock Your Heart 21.
Just a quick one. So is that what's being painted? There's not like freelance writing messages, doing whatever you want on this?
Oh, no, no. There's, there's three artists coming down that are going to do, it's a replication of a piece of artwork that's in the house. And it's just a collage of different colored cards. And then the lettering up the side will just say Rock Your Heart 21. Just a little bit to bring awareness because it is a virtual event. There'll be no, you know, on the ground people gathering. It'll just be, there's so many people that walk all the time. Anyway, we give them a week to do it. And it'll just bring awareness that the event's happening.
All I want to say is.
Yeah, are you going to put a date? Will they do a date on it?
Well, it's out in the airwaves right now. So social media is taking care of that. Oh, yeah.
I have another thought that you're using temporary painting. It's going to feel much better. So.
Oh, yeah. It'll wear up. And that's why we're trying to get it as close to the week that the walk is advertised as the 10th, 17th. So we're trying to get them to go in like Wednesday or Saturday this week. So we'll completely gone.
Now we understand the problem. Any other questions? Motion, motion please. Move to approve special event party for Alice's house to paint the crosswalk at Central Avenue and Marshfield Avenue on tomorrow, October 6th and 7th.
It would just be tomorrow. Just on October 6th, from 1:00 to 5:00. With the rainy of the 7th, the 7th.
Second one is current. I'm okay. I have eight zero motion carries. Thank you. Thanks a lot. Good luck. Good luck in your commitment to the project. So now special event application, how are we? Now how old the moon?
You can howl at the moon if you want.
I might. So this is the dog park, October 32nd, 5:00 AM, the rainy day of October 1st and we saw.
Yep. Hi, I'm busy.
So would you like to tell us about this fun event you're having? Well, I think dogs are quite.
Yes, the dogs are actually going to be wearing the costumes. It will go as well. Yes. So usually our big annual fundraiser is held at the Barker Tavern. It's our Halloween costume party for humans. But, and we had a date scheduled with Becky at the Barker to do it this year after not doing it last year. And then this summer with the Delta variant and numbers going up again, we just decided that it was best to put it off again this year. But we wanted to do something, you know, we have the ability to do events outside at the dog park like we did in the spring with the Situate Animal Shelter. So one of our board members said, well, how about we get the dogs in costume and have an event at the park? So that's what this event is. We are selling tickets for $5 per dog entry as part of our fundraiser. And then we have some local businesses that are sponsoring the event and other businesses that are offering items for raffles. So we'll sell raffle tickets to the event too. There'll be prizes given away for the best costume, scariest costume, cutest costume, whatever. We'll have dog treats to hand out, but we don't have plans for any human food consumption. Or, and we'll probably have like bottles of water there for, for people if they want them. And that's not, it's just going to be something fun. You know, we're still trying to get the small dog park built. And the last year to 18 months, we've taken a hit with our savings because we haven't been making as much fundraising money as we have in the past year. So, you know, we're happy to get back at it and do this event outside.
Just one more, so one more thing.
It's going towards building the small dog park. Yes.
I would only say I think you've been more than $5 ago. It's your decision, but you could raise more. And so we'll do everything, work out parking and all that. So.
Yeah. So I mean, I put on here a please detail, but I wanted to kind of get your feedback. We had a please detail for the pause for a cause event that we did with the animal shelter. And it was definitely helpful because we have a lot more people than we're, than we're expecting for this event. So I'm not sure what your feeling is. Like we're anticipating probably like 10 volunteers and maybe 40 adults, you know, attending with their dogs. So I, I think if one of us was at the gate and we advertised like we did with the pause for the cause, that any overflow parking at the lot was full should park at Green Bush. You know, I, I don't know if we need the please to tell, but I wanted to, I didn't know what the protocol was for that. And certainly if you guys encourage us to, to do that, we will follow through with it.
I, I guess my suggestion would be to at least touch base with the police again.
Okay.
And explain that again.
Sure.
We have someone here tonight, Jen, or, I mean, you might know, is there a protocol in terms of like on people where a police detail is definitely required versus, the only concern I've got with the date and the place. This is a, it's on, it's sort of kind of out there.
Yeah.
The offices are still out there.
Yeah.
The NBT parking lot is now a construction site. It's like, and who knows what's going on that untold brewery that I can, you know. So I think partners might be.
Okay.
But I did ask that if she had her back, would she please for these events, would she have offered her back yet or till? So you were allowed to touch base.
Okay, okay. Great.
I will. All right. And I don't think we have to approve or disapprove. That's up to them. It's a registry.
Yes.
We do follow up with the office.
Yeah, but I'm just saying that for us, we don't have to. Yes.
It is a tricky piece of road. There are two blocks on our ass there.
Right.
There's people who want to go there, they're rushed off, so.
Well, I'll.
How many spots are in the lot?
23. Yeah.
Why, I just can read the, the police pick you out.
Okay, I'll call Taylor tomorrow. Just do whatever he recommends.
Here, welcome. Any other questions?
No, I just want to say. Oh, thank you. Thank you.
The team of volunteers out there.
Yeah, they did a great job. It was a huge improvement.
Move to approve a special event department to the President's City Dog Park where there's special event Halloween costume party fundraiser on October 30th, 2021, such a dog park at 167 Goodland. So, and as you can see, all in favor? Five, five zero motion carries.
Great. Thank you. Thanks so much.
That's true. I don't care. Do you want to continue to say further?
I don't think I knew anything about the event, but we can.
Well, couple of here are you discuss what we want all valid license change and we should have. The other question is about our. Well, that's kind of. If you say so, I'm happy to hear that. No, there's two we can have. Right here. We have a number of people here waiting to be interviewed. The board gave applications. Thank you. There's no suggestions to move the firewall for these going to be studied. In front of, either in front of that or in front of the.
Or just. You just. Schools are protected.
We also have citizens sitting here.
So I would recommend that we, yeah, this is pretty quick, right? Because we usually have some great candidates that we get through pretty quickly. A lot of us just will, I imagine, be appointed. And then I, I would support moving it up before the board's review discussion.
Okay. That's fine. So board committee applicants, Council on Beijing, Deidre Dwyer. Thank you for coming in.
Thank you.
Would you like to tell us about yourself? Do you like, interested in the Council on Beijing?
Sure. I'm Dee Dwyer, and I've worked in Situate for 30 years. I moved here when I married my husband, Dave. He's a townie. I love Situate. And I have, love Situate also. I'm very interested in increasing the awareness of programs for seniors and working with community leaders and residents to get more people involved. Seeing that they're, yeah, I'm amazed with the programs that are being offered. During my husband's illness, I realized the importance of having to know about the benefits and programs that a community would offer. And fortunately, I took advantage of the shining moment of the Situate Senior Center and received excellent health insurance information from Warren Tatro. And it's that he's retired. And he really was so helpful, very doctor, very, you know, my wife, actually. So as a resident, I have volunteered in numerous activities for St. Mary's Church. My husband and I served as preking facilitators, as a treasurer of the ladies' guild. And currently I am on parish council. For the past 15 years, I have commuted to many towns in Eastern Mass where I work, but I have been able to take part in the programs offered by the Recreation Department, spending store, store core and long week classes. And I can't say enough about them. And I've also been, used the library all the time, one of my favorite places. And again, that's a great resource for the town. So as a senior, I'm interested in getting some programs or getting more opportunities for seniors who are still working so that they can participate in the activities of seniors. Right now, it's pretty much people that are not working. I love this town and I think this role is, is perfect for me for giving back to the community. Besides my personal experience, I go into particular my business experience, strong communication, interpersonal skills, ability to listen to all sides and also proving track record to get buckets on the town. Compassionate, committed and motivated to keep Situate the great town that it is. And I feel that I have the time and the energy to work on behalf of the town and the residents as a member of the city. We'll just imagine. And I appreciate your consideration of my application. I do have any questions coming in. Who's name is? Oh, two. I, yeah, all right. It is one of your. Would you like to start?
Just very quickly, our next one. We, I just wanted to know, there are three more names. Three of the members that left were in D. To help make sure the building was built, which I just need a little moment to acknowledge Janice Dennis and David Poileman, Janice and you all. Who are really, work, who are really hard. And so as you pointed out, this is like the new era. So you can, I, we can, we.
I haven't met, met the senior center, yes, of course. And it's so light in the area. I should have that my hoax. But it is gorgeous. And, you know, I met a lot of, you know, same areas, people there, you know, written in.
And Linda is the director.
I, I didn't mean to, no. I just, I think it's off tour.
I, I just pointed out, this, this group has worked, you know, the building has worked in the last year to get the building home and running. And now it's, you know, it's, it's doing exactly what we thought, which is building the town. Programming is exploding. So it's, it's a great group to get involved with. And I'm sure that your passion and enthusiasm would be a good addition to this group. But I would encourage you to, obviously, to, if on the vote, right. And is to reach out to some of the members and get them out there quickly because they are pretty. Some groups are just going to be under this one.
Right. Well, and I, I am on parish council with Susan Kelly. So I don't know her, I don't know her. I know Lori Ferko. Is she still on there?
I believe she is. Yeah, she is. Yeah, she's, she's been in this group. So. Yeah.
Well, thank you. Thank you for listening.
Well, thank you. Thank you for listening.
Excuse me. Just.
Well, we're all.
Maybe I have a question.
Okay.
Probably more praise than questions. I, you know, you said very well, your passion, your knowledge of the town and the resources it had. That's what we're trying to do right now. We have this great group that was there to help get it built and have to just try to emphasize it again. It's all of the, you bring some of the town, you start.
Yeah, I would just like to say thank you because you seem like a doer. And what I've been impressed by everybody that's come before us this season, if you will, is the energy and the goal is to really act, not just supposed to sit at a table once a month and talk about it. Supposed to really react. And we, we seem to have a very specific goal, which is to help communicate your value to the clients, which is a terrific, really well-known, that system, so. Excited.
Yes, yeah, I wanted to say, we don't have many opportunities to just really thank you, but you were so impressive in your knowledge of what's happening, the programs, and you made it. Point to be, that was asked.
Thank you very much.
All right, please stay on that. Next, I have eight great applicants for the Sister City Ireland. James Cannon. Right, come on. Thank you, sir. Tell us about yourself.
My name is Jim Cannon, and I live in money length in Citroen. Been here almost three years and loving it. I've been volunteering with the Sister City Committee since the day we arrived. And I'm serving, serving on the board of the Irish Social Church as well. Appointed me to the, uh, the postal advisory commission two years ago, but I've just got to give it to them. So, so the Sister City Committee, though, is my first one. Brenda's right here, so I have to say that. It's true, it's true. My, my father spoke to the Galway brothers people from Cork. And a couple of years ago, I was fortunate, my wife at the time was chancellor at UNC Ashville. So I was one of two faculty, took nineteen students on a study of rock trip to Dublin and Galway. And they were all business majors, but my job was to link the Irish River Revival to the business industry that they were learning about. So it's developed culture, you know, Irish economy. I like the belief. So it's been a blast. It's been a lot of fun working in the Sister City Committee. Now, because of COVID, we've lost two exchange periods where we've had the students coming and going. But we're just saving our money for that day when we can send some Citroen kids over there and send those kids to Cork. Look forward to being officially appointed to the Sister City Committee.
Sure, Jim is, is, is the, the perfect person to put on the committee. He's been involved since day one, especially moving to town anyways. You go to the events, you go to the meetings, you know what's going on with it. You get your pulse on a lot of things going on in the community. And this is the best committee in the town. That is, they've done a ton of stuff, they have a ton of fun, those are great people. If you get lucky. It's the reason why I strive. So if you go to Ireland, if that ever comes back, it is actually tragic. So you'd be great asset, so. That's it. Thanks, thanks.
Now, you have, there's a recommendation back from, from Chip's chair recommending this appointment. And I know the hard work is hard.
Yeah, thank you for all the work it's done and, and advanced for the work I have. Absolutely.
Sorry for losing on postal, but I support. Are you doing well?
You've already reappointed me.
Oh, okay, that's how it's supposed to happen.
This morning and.
I just wanted to be happy that they have volunteers, very talented, so.
It's all good. This morning, the hazard mitigation team that, um, I've been serving on that, so the volunteers. But thank you for all you do, which at least we can disturb our community. Thank you.
All I want to say is thank you to our committee chairs who are recruiting people and makes this job much easier.
Thank you.
We'll be in touch with you tomorrow.
Absolutely, thank you.
Thank you, good evening. So first, thank you for the opportunity to interview for our position on the situated West Cork Sister Committee. Be able to say the name officially and correctly is possibly one of my key credentials, actually. Questions, how does it?
Tell us why you're interested in the committee. It's slightly obvious that you like it, Ireland. You get to work on this, these wonderful people.
Brenda would be mad if I'm not interested. Um, but no, seriously, so I'm the grandson of Irish grandparents, both of whom were born and lived in Ireland through their adult children. Immigrant in that states in their adult. Um, and so all the while that I was growing up, my whole childhood experience was really immersed in Irish tradition, Irish, Irish history. And so I gained a very clear appreciation for many contributions that Irish culture has made to our home. Literary, historic, musical, political contributions to our culture. So I sort of wrote that as, you know, a family surrounded by Irish grandparents, right? Right from camp to camp. Um, and then that also has sort of a whole large family of brothers and sisters. Each of the grandparents were one of six, one of nine, so lots of aunts and uncles who remained living in Ireland. Um, and then that close immediacy of grandparents living there. I enabled me to get my Irish citizenship, which I have. And so we've traveled to Ireland quite often, annually. So, so a deep rooted interest in all things Ireland. And then coupled, I guess, with the long time in Citroen. One grandfather purchased a home on C A Circle after. Um, and so that was his summer home, but each of our individuals staying in that son's there with his children. And then my wife, Jenny and I purchased down here twelve years ago, two thousand and ten, but it will be twelve years ago. So coming to be a long time official resident of the town. So those two sort of, you know, complimentary pieces. Certainly Citroen at the time enjoyed a very long, very deep rooted Irish history. So that brought lots of interest to my attention as well. I've had the good fortune to serve as a member of the Boston College Ireland Business Council also for very many years. So I think that, hopefully that will bring some networking opportunities to the committee as well.
Our deeper, you know, understanding and knowing that again from the chair of what's happening and what's in order. Y'all know what's, what we're looking for now, so.
Well, then you've got the, uh, you know, the recommendation of the chair again here. And she's certainly, um, is a great leader and has a very high bar. So if you eat that bar, I know that you're.
It's that.
You're an active member, which is important, so I think.
Yeah, no additional questions. I, I think we're going to see a lot of great candidates. So here's what I will say to all of you here if you're on the panel. If I look at this correctly, there's five people, three spots. Is that possible?
I would like to allocate some people to some different spots, so.
Yeah, that's all. But for, for this, so if you don't get voted on for me, you can still participate. Go with Jim, where you can go to the event, you can go to the meeting, see what's going on. Not, I'm not saying, yeah, not saying, yeah, but there's going to be two people here that aren't, sure, potentially, so. But I think you have great competitors. I love that. I love to hear thoughts of these, these kind of collaborations.
Yeah, that's going to really improve, um, which mission itself is that the Boston College Business Council really aligns fairly tightly with the mission of the Citroen West Cork Sister City Committee. The mission of that Ireland Business Council is to promote business expansion and investment, particularly focused on the Winman region and Ireland. So I think which, you know, the hope is that that can develop into some networking business opportunities down the road as well, so.
Thank you, of course.
I think you're exactly right. The cross-civilization, your experience, the heritage trail and the, and the Sister City missions. It's, it's going to be so, and the, and the visitor center too, all of those things coming together in a couple of years, all hands on back, except.
So much to pursue there.
Oh, yes, very exciting. Thank you for, for letting, for the, for the.
Delighted to.
Thank you for coming in.
Of course, thank you.
Good evening, hi.
Well, I'd like to tell us about yourself.
I, I, I would like the little TV commercial where the fella has his leader hosen on and then he goes to ancestry and finds out he has to change the leader hosen to a kilt. I'm a little different. Volker is a Dutch and German last name, and I always identified it's that. And then we did our, our ancestry and it turned out to have a lot of Irish relatives, mostly from North Kerry, North Cork, slew of great grandparents in Derry and goes back to Shanahan's and Hayes's and all the way to the Kennedys in seventy ninety. So I'm, I'm a mutt. I, I'm very, very mixed. But, uh, you know, maybe three or four years ago, really started get delve into, you know, the Irish and said to the family, how did this happen? And they said, well, both your grandmothers were Irish. Well, nobody told me. By way of a little background, we moved here fifty months ago in James Landing. We were, both my wife and I, very active in her hometown of Cheshire, Connecticut, which was historically a foreign town. And I was involved in, we had a town manager, former government on the council. And at that time, we actually adopted mutually a sister city of Burton, Ohio. So I, you know, kind of know how it works. Burton is part of Western Reserve, Connecticut, way back when. It's, it's in east of Cleveland. Also through our church, we have some sister cities in Central America. So, um, you know, I want to be involved. I understand there might be, you know, limited space, but, um, I was told that they were happy to have a German guy on the Citroen softball, old, old timer softball league. I said, you're kidding, I'm not only German here. He says, yeah, the rest of, the other hundred and fifty of us are Irish, but they're not. So, uh, that's kind of, you know, in a little thumbnail sketchy me.
We're uneducated, so I understand. I just want to say I have had the pleasure of working with Tom over the last. For our, uh, since he's moved here on the charter review missions. And we're not letting him go, but his contributions there have been very, very appreciated and helpful to that process. So he knows how to work in a committee for dark shirts and it's a pleasure. And you're not leaving, so we're glad.
I understand that, and you're very kind. I make the forum. That's my strongest, right? My strongest.
I started hearing this, let anyone get away with something to do.
Yeah, well, she's been very kind to me, yeah.
Yeah, I have, I have no questions or things to add, or can you do a very present name? Great participation in the fire, fire plans, so, and welcome to the.
Thank you.
Hold on, would you may have.
I'm sorry.
No, I hope you agree and thank you for all your service on the charter. She was like, no, that's the driver.
Well, it's a pleasure. It's a really good group and they're, they're way behind me. They're educating me. Welcome.
Now, uh, so if, if one objects, we have the superintendent school here patiently waiting and Dr. Dutch, uh, and Travis, who discussed the article for please move the study expedite. For the Catholic elementary school. He was beginning, he was to switch the order, so we're attending the school superintendent first because he's been patiently waiting. But we're kind of on schedule, so hopefully.
All right. It wasn't invited, but it's a place for all of us. We just not, we just not. Right, you want my.
Sure. Why don't we, Dr. Dutch, superintendent, and.
Should be sending that to speed him over in an hour.
Now, to be honest with you. But I know you're. So I'm tired of the revenue case, but.
Was he serious? It started, but it, no, it'll be a long game. Don't worry. Guaranteed.
So Chris Martin, the chair of the capital planning committee, to take a vote on this.
So we did. We met last week. Uh, we had members of the school committee and Dr. Dutch and Mr. Burke had in. Uh, we had a long discussion about why we're doing this, what's involved and what we're paying for. Uh, I guess the easiest part of the discussion was Nancy has identified articles to pay for with, so there won't be any borrowing involved. Those are things. Um, so beyond that, we discussed why we needed to do this. And the capital planning committee did vote unanimously to support it, more because we couldn't find no logical reason not to. We don't, this is not an endorsement of we want to, you know, go directly at building a new school. But this study is required to move forward in any part of the process, whether it's fixing the current or building a new. The study, um, lays the groundwork for any kind of reimbursement program that we want to get involved with. So no matter what we want to do, no matter how much we want to spend, this study needs to happen. So like I said, we did vote unanimously for it. Uh, I will say that the unanimous was three votes because that's literally a shut up. So.
Your first meeting?
We're.
I wasn't asked. I'm watching. Aren't you supposed to have five members?
We have seven voting members, five appointed by town moderator, two by.
So this would.
We had, we had a forum.
Of the.
Uh, we had a fair minimum forum of the available voting now.
That's a tall question, sure. So was the school committee member one of those voting members? Because they are allowed to vote.
Yeah.
So that, that raises the question why a school committee representative wouldn't be there to vote on the project.
So the school committee member, the school committee member assigned to capital planning did not attend. There was a representative from the school committee there to answer questions, not as a voting.
Yeah, it was last minute emergency for the voting number who couldn't make it. And British place shut up, but could not vote. What was the answer to questions? The part of conversation.
Any questions for Mr. French?
Thanks for going.
And so, pre, pre-sale. Now we have superintendent and Dr. Dutch, who is right here. There's some questions that are left. I don't know if we let's start.
Sure. Can you give a overview of that?
Yes, um, so we're asking for one point one million dollars for the next phase. We're in the eligibility phase, which is the first phase, which was voted on by select board to go before the state statement of interest, which we approved. Obviously, this is mandated by the MSBA, as I mentioned. Uh, and what this money is used for is to begin the feasibility study, the schematic design phase of the project, which helps us hire a, or as project manager, which acts as our equivalent of work on our behalf to get the project running. Hire the architect, begin the work of digging into what the, you know, what the bones of the project will look like, what the building is going to look like. If it's a renovation, for example, if it's a consolidation of buildings, a real deep dive into the previous one that was done to put as part of the SOI master study. And I might add also that if there's money left over for this, it could go towards the building of the, the project on the renovations if we need it to.
Additionally, it is reimbursable as well. The one, of the 1.1 million, somewhere between 40 and 43% could be reimbursed.
If you go forward.
If you go forward, only if you go forward with the schematic design and the feasibility, that, that's also reimbursable.
Yeah, just to clarify on that. So if you do this feasibility study, don't go any further than make for the full cost?
Yeah.
Okay. The second question is, it's really just a statement. I think that some of the confusion about this article is it says feasibility study, it's kinetic for Hattaway Elementary School. And I think that's been confusing to folks as they are reviewing this. So just, could you just speak to that for a minute? Why that language is in the article as opposed to the recommendation, which is on building?
Yeah. So when the, the two statements of interest put in, one was for Hattaway, one was for Cushing to increase the odds of getting one of the, with both kind of the same concept. I think there were six plans that were agreed upon by the committee. Four of them included building new schools. Or also including the combination of those. There is also the renovation costs mixed in there as well. So the Hattaway project was the one chosen by MSBA to look at. I will say they typically don't renovate schools that size. They would likely, and that was a recommendation again from such a time would be consolidate because pushing in the Hattaway. So by putting two in, you got one with the potential of doing that plan. So it's called the Hattaway project because Hattaway and Cushing were both put in. That was the one chosen by MSBA. But the options under this plan could be all the way from renovating that school to combining the Cushing and the Hattaway. So if we don't know, that's why we need the feasibility, the smaller, shorter one version done. This would be a more depth one, obviously, that would determine all of that when we build two, one new school and close down two, one, more renovations.
Yeah, we've gone through this a couple of times and from preschool to high school. This is the first step that we have to do. It's a, it's a big step, right? If you choose how to do it, it's a million dollar cost. So, but the upside of this is if you build a hundred million dollar school, as Dr. Dutch said, we will get, you know, 40 million, 40 plus a million dollars in front of state. So, you know, that's your decision at hand to proceed with this. School, bringing this apartment, Hattaway, it's not really built in the educational law. It's a person who felt that. So it's the first step coming down that path.
Just to, may I follow? And I, I don't know if you received it yet, but I did offer at the last, it's good, it was after capital meeting, I invited the capital board and we'll invite this board as well as school committee on a tour of the building. If you haven't been in there, I think it's really helpful. I mean, it's, it's one thing to hear it from me, I've only been here a year, but to go and take a tour with our facilities director, Kelly, to go around and see that and ask questions, to get those questions answered, it would be helpful also. You know, that's after the vote, but certainly I think it's a powerful way to kind of see, get your questions answered on the learning programs is really what we're talking about as a renovation versus a, a new building. We were hit pretty hard on special education and you kind of see, it was mentioned in a previous meeting, something to the effect, we literally do have a story called, that had been shifted into special education classrooms. So it's, it's the learning that's being impacted is the concern I have.
Well, I would just add, if any of you go the office for the tour, I take all the pushing and look out that renovations are needed since they've been out of that school for probably 15 years and it needed it back then. So no doubt there that it's needed. And that identification also, I think it's a part of that committee that you ultimately have to get, right? To make sure it's successful, success. I think one of the questions that I'm going to let my colleague here go through, but I think one of the concerns is why the board wanted you both to come back in front of us is really to talk about all these projects that we have approved in the past years that haven't been implemented. And I know the two of you were, do work, but you know, hopefully we'll get back into why certain capital projects haven't been implemented. You know, we've got some appropriations here from 2015, 2017 that haven't been addressed or, or completed. And we're dipping into free cash, which impacts, you know, other services that we're able to support in town when we're looking at funds. And they're not huge, these two line items, maybe probably $20,000, but still I think that is some of the, and I'm not speaking for you, but I thought the whole starts that you raised were valid last week, just to understand, you know, what is your interim plan on some of these capital projects while we're asking the town to invest another 1.1 million to go forward, right? How, what is the plan in the meantime, right? Because we all know, this may vary during the process.
So I, I can't answer what happened in the past and why, why it wasn't done previously. I can tell you that I now, I've been here for a year, have a better picture of what, what the capital improvements were that were approved. And we're starting to pick away at those. For example, one is a $50,000 stairway at the Jenkins school. So we've just gotten three quotes for that and that'll be happening this year. The same is true with the port of Wampatuck and the parking lots at Wampatuck and the locker room renovations at the high school. So those are our four projects that we plan to do this year.
That are underway.
That are, well, the stairs are, well, are scheduled. The other three, we have architects assisting in getting the specs for putting those out a bit. So, so they are in, in process. I think the, the other piece of that is that we're also looking at all of our facilities and trying to keep us from being in a situation similar to where we are with Hattaway and Cushing and getting to the point of no return. So we, we want to make sure, and we've done it this year, again, because we were able to have some additional funds in the budget this year, to create a line item for a maintenance plan, so that we can actually follow through on maintaining what we have, so that we don't have to keep building new. And our hope is that we can continue to grow that line item by finding savings elsewhere. And then ultimately, not having to have these large capital expenditures because we've been maintaining our facilities. So that's where we are at this point.
Thank you for that.
Can I? This was a large part of the discussion at our meeting was what about all these projects that we have funded in the past? We know that going out, it's at least five years before we even scratch the ground to do anything on this project. So we still need to address leaking windows and things like that, other maintenance parts in these buildings. So we did discuss what about pushing this project off? Nancy's identified $200 million in capital projects over the next five years. I don't know if that includes this. Okay. But in addition to everything else, you know, is this something that we pursue right now? This study is going to give us a roadmap of what these three schools, or at least two.
Two for certain, and there's a potential for some.
Two include Wampatuck.
There's also some consideration of repairs to Wampatuck as part of that discussion.
Gives us a better, even a better roadmap than the Higbee study did of what these schools would need, what they call, what the cost is going to be and, you know, all of that. So even if we don't move forward at all, we're going to have a roadmap of what we need to do. Hattaway and Cushing don't meet the structural requirements of the new school program. So it's something we need to acknowledge, but again, do we need to acknowledge that in build a school immediately or can we push it up five or 10 years? And if we do push it out that far, can we maintain them that long in order to plan for bigger project? So, yeah, we did discuss, you know, these other products in great detail.
I might just, thank you, Chris. I, I think that meeting was outstanding and I think getting to know the people and the history, the learnings with Bob and I, and you'd understand our philosophy. You know, I want to make it very clear that, you know, we don't want, we, we take the taxpayers' money very seriously in the investment. And I think just to reiterate what Bob said, we're the, we're the first ones to make a commitment to a maintenance line item that has never existed because it's our responsibility to take care of our students. And we don't want to keep coming back there asking for more money from the taxpayers. So we want that to be clear. So we're, you know, we're tapping into capital all the time. So I think, you know, that maintenance line is a start, but I think it's a philosophy shift. I think the other thing that Bob and I sat down with last year is we noticed the same things that, you know, Mr. Goodrich brought up. This money's been approved, why aren't these things fixed? I mean, you know, so right away, Bob's already digging back to the low hanging fruit of the past and addressing those and the ones we just got, are getting those addressed because we aren't going to be the folks that don't get these done, that you have to say this three years, you didn't get it done. So, you know, hopefully this is the last brand new school in a long time. We'll show evidence, I think, in the next few years through our capital planning and our in-house maintenance planning on, you know, taking this very seriously, how we keep our schools up to, up to par and not having to.
The other, the other thing to keep in mind is, as you consider what Chris had said, if, if we were to try and repair Hattaway and Cushing on, on our own capital expenditures, that means that, you know, obviously the resource is finite. That means that the projects at Jenkins and Wampatuck are going to be deferred even further. And now you're going to be in a similar situation in those buildings 10 years down the road. So there, there's an opportunity here for, for reimbursement that I don't think you should pass on.
It was a, it wasn't a meeting. It was intense at times and I don't want to hear the attention because I care about other aspects of taxpayers and other priorities. My first question, are, are students safe in our schools today? Do you, are we providing an excellent education? Yep. So to me, I hear that and I see that any other, the main improvement that I heard at that meeting, it was a long meeting, was that many of our classrooms in these schools touch, they have, but the gym, so indoor recess, right? So I asked my son, we have a class there, the teacher does something amazing, she shuts the door and they don't hear us. When I think, when we talked about resiliency, this is how students going to school care about your students going to school impact resiliency back in 2008. And I, to me, my concern, those are actual students going to school that day.
Actual citizens?
Those are citizens, those in the Boston Bowl 2018, they went to school, that girl went to school. I have to today, think about Front Street and all the other projects that Nancy talks about, I'm much more concerned about her getting to school that day than how loud it is. I'm much more concerned, for a whole year, the classroom was my son's laundry room. It's not the classroom I'm mostly concerned about, it's the safety and type of education and we're investing in our teachers, that's me as a parent. I think that number's probably below Nancy for 200 million for capital projects. I don't know if that has to harbor resiliency, which is at least 80 million. Hundred, there's 114 million. We keep talking about what are we going to do with this, with this water treatment plant? That's not my concern. There's another 70 million after that. And I think I've seen this movie before, because we just talked about what, what are the capital priorities? And I didn't hear anything for Cushing, I didn't hear anything for Hattaway. So nothing will, will get done this year. And so what's going to happen? It's going to pass tonight, it's going to pass a town meeting. And my gut is, it's probably not going to, I don't think the last school project passed by that much. I think people are going to look at the, the master plan and realize that we had people go down the master plan and building a new school was not part of our master plan. And I don't think it's going to be prioritized. I would rather use this 1.1 million today and put it and fix the windows at Hattaway, fix Cushing to help those kids today and not wait five years. Where, where would you, where, I'm asking you, given this town, what should our, what should our number of priorities be? Did you give brown water? Should it be sewers?
Can, can I answer that in defense of capital planning? Because I mean, and that's, it's, it's what you're trying to address. All of these are giant capital projects. We need, we need this study to identify the cost of whatever project is moving forward in the school world. We also have studies in, you know, going on for the water treatment plant. We have resiliency studies and whatnot. Then comes the capital plan. My, my little committee that meets three months out of the year and whatnot, and we don't shed a whole lot of light on anything, but we do sit down and discuss this and have to prioritize this. We understand that there is $200 million saying, you know, all of these numbers, this is our job to prioritize this. So I need.
Is this your number, one priority?
This is not, but I need this, I need this study to know where it is in the priority.
Yes, yes. We have, we just had 90,000. This is our second study. We had a $90,000 study and now there's a $1.1 million study. You've seen the $90,000 study, which should I, so I'll, actually, I'll tell you about the students. I don't get many emails, but I'll tell you what happened last year. It was very smart students in eighth grade who reached out, the civics lesson, they asked me, there's a whole civics lesson last year. Caitlin, these are people who just left some of these same schools and did a whole thing about what's the number one priority, etc. And this is brown water. And they said, what's, what's the current plan and timeline for fixing brown water? Why is it taking so long to fix this issue? Wonderful conversations with them about, perhaps we have, these were the same kids who are just in there and they see it. What, as Mr. Chairman, what's the number one priority for capital?
There isn't a number one priority. There are men, there are multiple projects going on all the time. There is no number one priority. The number one priority is to run the town as efficiently and as, you know, as properly as possible. Water is a big project and is an ongoing, multi-page project. And every time, you know, when the capital projects come, you know, when that request come through, you know, they are reviewed and they are, you know, approved or not approved based on the merits of that project. It's not that we can take all of the money and spend it on water right now and not address schools, not address fire departments, not address all of the other things that we need to do to operate the town.
This is for my colleagues. If, I'm, I'm not going to change anyone's mind, so I don't want to belabor this, but if any of these issues were a priority to such a degree that there's some issue, I would expect either the school committee or it's become knocking on, demanding that we fix this, and it hasn't happened. We need to fix this window, we need to, but no. Today, we still sit here about one project that fixed, either one of them, but we'll have a study. The last two capital projects have been studied and studied. I've stood under that board ago at Wampatuck, which is $120,000, at least 500, at least 500 times. I, I can think of 50 projects for 120,000 or others spent, $700,000 for a locker room at the high school. Yes, that'd be fixed, but we're talking about how these other schools have all those other issues. If there was such an issue, I would have expected, and I'd vote that tomorrow, I'm trying to get the 1.1 million to the action of school, not to some consultants who I think the voters are going to single it, when it actually comes up for both.
So that's one of the challenges we as a board face, have faced, or refuse to face, right? Our town has been, we're mostly ignored for years and it's been this for, more before us and started to actually get movement probably 10 years ago, prior to that, that we're going to do. So we're always going to have these projects. these projects that we have to balance. And it is, it is a tough decision. But at the end of the day, it's up to the voters. It's our job to bring the problems and solutions forward to the public. This is my opinion. Right? It's our job to bring it forward to the public. That's why we have town meetings. That's why the schools go out and educate the parents. Look, we all know that the quality of our schools has a direct impact on our real estate crisis. We invested that many, get rid of last night at the school. Many people are upset about their cast. These guys need to give these folks, you know, these children, an environment in which they can provide a proper new, you know, project-based learning philosophy, so these kids can compete in the world that you have come before. So I, I don't disagree with you with your questioning of what's happening in the past and, and the statement that there's nothing here for pushing in Hathaway in the next five years. But let's face it, it's going to be eight before we break ground on a new school. So we can't continue to ignore the existing and let it go, go even further into degradation, right? So we've got to put some sort of a plan in place between now and 18 years from now. This feasibility study, I, I, it's not like a hobby. It's not, you know, it's a requirement of the MSBA to actually come up with a design for us to consider and go forward. It's going to be much more targeted. It's not that here's five options, you get to choose one, like you just won't do in 2018. So it's a necessary step in which we as a town need to get to, I agree with you about the 1.1. I think that's what we're saying. Let's look at that investment in the meantime, too, right? And let's not ignore that continued investment in schools to maintain them. So the windows can shut. So they have proper ventilation and then basic things like that. So I just, I want you just to consider that we're always going to balance these needs in our town. And, and that's something they have to consider with their timing. Water is a number one priority for us. It's like you said, probably a hundred and 10 million dollar investment as we go through phase one, phase two. And that's, that's a primary resource for us as human beings that we have to provide. So and that's just something that's going to have to be weighed by the public, is the timing and where they want their investment. But I view that it's, I remember standing on that side of the desk 15 years ago, 20 years ago, screaming at the board on this side of the desk, saying, it is up to the voters to decide. Put this in front of the public. So I'm going to stand behind my philosophy there and put it in front of the public, and have to decide where they want that. That's fantastic.
I appreciate that. And for me, it is partly, it's about the time. I mean, I want a new school. But I know if we, I just don't move forward. These other things, one of them is going to get dropped. Either it's going to be resiliency, sewer, or water. We cannot do it all at once. And so that's why, again, I bring it in front of the voters, but also they have to best to say, no, because those don't, there aren't big advocates for sewer. There's not like, who's for, yeah, I mean, for. No, 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 not for North Centurion. I'm taught with a different eye and eye and other. But that's what I mean. It's going to keep going down the road. And I mean, just, and you're at the perfect point that North Centurion is taking so long. Or harbor resiliency. Who's excited for the 80 million dollar on the harbor resiliency plan? Let's vote for that. So that's, that's mine. Investors, but that's, I'm not going to change.
I'd like to say two things. One is that the library. We were doing a renovation of the library, and when time gets done, she was a grandmother library. So you never know what you're going to run into when you're into an old building. And I feel as though both of those schools are same vintage. I think it's remarkable that we've managed to keep. And in fact, we did invest in Wamputuck all along. And, and the fact is, it's, it's a similar design, but it's in much better shape, which is why I don't think you put into, you know, the feasibility or the MSBA application that you were thinking about. I'm not sure of that, but point being that we just don't know what we're going to run into. And so I think the library is very recent example of that. And furthermore, I would like to afford the school committee to get out there and educate the public because town meetings coming up, and this is on the mark. And no matter what we say as a board, they're going to vote. And if they don't come up with the right numbers, it could, it could fail, which will put us back considerably. And maybe we're going to be back in the situation where Andrew's right. If it fails in town meetings, we're going to have to go back to the drawing board and figure out how do we deal with these two buildings. And the third thing I'd like to say is the whole issue of districting. I was in Hathaway's school two years ago, and I know it's changed over the course of a year or two. But I was in classrooms that were literally, a special ed teacher was sitting there in a huge classroom by herself. And there were no, kids were not out of recess. Kids were in that building. I know where they were. But it seems to me as though there needs to be some thought given to the districting over the next couple of years, because as we all point out, five years, maybe we're lucky to get to school. No, it's eight years. So that's all.
The school committee has directed me to start that process of educating the community. And word is getting out, and we've got some flyers going out, and I think it goes across the town. Sending flyers out on October 14th, did on my cable show, cable show on the Monday mornings. I'm a guest on. So we're trying to get the word out. October 14th is the first, first one. I'll be doing an afternoon and evening question and answer. But also, you know, I don't disagree with a lot of what Mr. Goodrich says. I think it's a tough decision. And so I want to hear those concerns from, from the community, share, you know, some, a lot of times, people, when they go and vote, the biggest piece for us is to educate them and make sure that they're educated voters on all these. Their questions get answered, and if I don't have the answer, we'll find it out. So, yes, we will start that. It's very advice, and there'll be many of those. But before this October 26th vote, you know, that, that is important that we had that opportunity. Then it'll open up, you know, obviously for Q and A, anyone can reach out to me on any questions office.
Are you doing some sessions at the senior center?
I am. One in six, one in the afternoon and six p.m. 14th of October. Yeah. We'll have some information there again. You know, just get this information. And as far as the timing, you know, it's not great, but as you know, we're bound. When the MSBA accepted us, the clock starts. So, you know, it'd be great if we could adjust this, but we just can't. So I think that's, you know, that's where we're at.
We have the same situation with the library.
Yeah.
You got to the point, you take the grant, you don't take the, you don't take it.
It's out of your hands.
Yeah, I mean, the only thing I'll add is, you know, you both bring up very good points. A million dollars is kind of an investment for a $40,000 return. Bringing up the votes doesn't matter if this meeting, you'll get the 150 million. It's the people that aren't going to show, that are showing the ballots when they can overpass, or you decide. So you really have to build a case for more than just the kids in the school and their parents to come and will vote for this. But this will also tell us whether, whether it's built or fixed. So I think, you know, if it's a fix, if it's possible to fix, then we'll find that out as well and then go down the course that you're pointing for. But it's a, it's a million dollars that isn't going into property that we're, that we're talking, that we're talking about that could fix windows. So it's a difficult, we've talked, every time, I'm looking at John out here, because we did this for, for years and years together. Every time we have a big ticket item like this, we have to look at the big picture, and it's tough. We talk about this every time. So it's just very, very hard to look $45 million in the face and not take it for a parent like you even said, you're going to have to make it 10 years anyways. We have been talking about repairs in these buildings for a decade now. So this isn't a new event. Your point is, so why do you take, why do you fix the windows in the 10 years that occur? So I get that as well.
The point is that the repairs outlined in the last study were 26 million. So if we get all of them, it's still less than 40.
That, that was my, that was yesterday's one.
It was two years ago. So at 30. I, I did want to say, I, I do want to thank you for, I know these are tough. And you're answering for issues that precede you. So I, I do recognize that and having foresight to go with understanding having the maintenance budget, I think, can go a long way to ease some concerns for some parents. But I know they're a difficult conversation. So thank you for it.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'll give the flip notes, because I know I've got a lot more to talk about. We'll, I assume when we vote, we could add. But I just want to, one thing that we haven't really talked about is that we got to this point because of the, the work done in the previous study clearly demonstrated that the buildings that we have now are both physically and educationally obsolete. And so you're right, we could put 26 million dollars in the structure sound, but I still want to address those two very well-vetted problems with our, with our schools. And I don't think that serves our community as well as it could. The other thing is if we fail, if this fails, if our meeting, and we don't spend this money, every dollar, whatever we come up with is going to be 100% more funded immediately. So if we, or this 26 million dollars or 30, or whatever, is to just make the structures not physically obsolete, we haven't even begun to address the, the educational obstacles. So I think that number would be higher, and that would be 100% on our account. So you're right. And the last thing I wanted to say is, you know, that's our, our responsibility as the board of this town is to, to work with Chris and Ms. Committee and Nancy and the town administrator to look at that one and all of these large capital. I think, Chris, you said it perfectly, that you can't not do any of these other things just because one is done, which is important, because then you're just whacking all in problems. So I really think we have to look at it in a big picture. We have to make the case to the community that we, if we support this, there's why, knowing what else is happening. But I think this particular juncture has been extremely well-vetted to get us to this point. And you know, I will, I will support taking that next step and and see where it leads. But we need to do that, otherwise we are at square one. That's not serving the community. That's my question. We appreciate your comments, because.
Maybe say one more. Before we change the charter, because I know Karen is working on changing the charter, I think it's important that the school committee understands that you have a voting position on the capital planning committee. And you have had that for years. And I would venture to guess, if I look at the attendance record of the capital planning committees, that there was not consistently, because when I was a liaison, there was never a school committee ever there. So if capital investments are important to you as a system, they need to be a convenient service. And I, I'm sorry, I know that sounds harsh, but I witnessed it myself as a liaison, and I'm sure Chris can attest to it as well. But that's your opportunity to have your representation and voice her, and of both. You're not a liaison, you're a voting member. So I just, I know you're new to the town, the charter's a lot of things to get, but it's an important piece that you could take back to your committee.
Any final comments? Anyone in the audience who'd like to?
Yes. I know you are. I'm Jamesway. I know Andrew mentioned the master plan. And I was on, I was lead, I was part of that committee. And it did come up in schools briefly in the beginning of discussing what the master plan should address. But because this process had already started, it wasn't really, but it wasn't put in high importance, because there were other issues of the town in those community forums determined what were higher priorities to them. I did look at the previous master plan, and I didn't see any, any information there on addressing the old gates. So, and that, I think, 2004. So just because it's not in the master plan, doesn't necessarily mean that it has, you know, it's not informed.
True. But it's a, I mean, it's a big ticket item, with a lot of other big ticket items that are coming down the road, and it's got to be, you know, people are going to make decisions at some point.
Well, they came through for the new gates and the public safety complex. Those are two boats, two big, big projects at the same time.
Thank you for having us. We appreciate it. Thank you.
Mr. Danning, on behalf of his client, Mr. Rankin, sent the CPC letter and also sent the board selectmen, select law letter. And it was discussing the potential to develop the border street property. I thought it only fair that you come in to let the public know that as much as there's a lot of talk about the importance of preserving border street, and I'm not there to speak against open space, I would never do that. But there is an alternative on the table. And I think it'll be fair that the citizen constituent know what that is. So that's why we're here tonight. So would you like to tell us?
Sure. Well, good evening, Madam Chair, select board members and establishment. My name is John Danning. For those who don't know, I'm actually an attorney in our town. And I represent Jerry Rankin, who is actually to my left. He is the individual, or actually the manager of the entity known as Border Street LLC, that had actually gone out to purchase the property on Border Street from my Lionshead Trust. After doing an offer and entering to a purchase and sale agreement, because the land is what's called Chapter 61A, it's agricultural. In any town, under the statute, every town has the right for first opportunity for refusing to buy it. In essence, first right refuses, what they call it. So the town has now been given the opportunity to purchase it under the time frame of 120 days. I thought it fair that the board understand what Mr. Rankin was proposing to do, because there have been some proponents who are also looking to try to purchase it for the benefit of the town. So we sent the letter on September 27th, it's public record, and identifying what he's proposing to do, showing the land and the topography. So Mr. Rankin's looking to purchase the property. The property is 18 acres. The purchase price is $2,235, or $230,000.
Two million.
I'm sorry. $2,350,000. You have my numbers still on. Okay, thanks, Jerry. Of that purchase, eight acres, okay? He's proposing to donate back to the town. The remaining 10 acres of the 18, he's proposing to build six farm-style houses on the lots. Those lots will be on Border Street. Five of them will be in the field area, if you drive by it. There will be what's called a retreat lot, that is back set, that's set back off the property, or off the road, rather. With respect to the eight acres that he's looking to donate back to the town, before he donates it back, he's proposed, and he will build, a parking lot, correct. That is exactly it. A parking lot on the eight acres. Now, it's represented about 7.35, but he's going to give you eight total. Now, the benefit of that is by building it, he will build it. It's a condition that he will enter into if he's successful in purchasing the property. The town will not have to build it. About 16 are parking spaces. Now, some people will probably watch this and say, well, why would you want to do that? Build a parking lot that we can't utilize. But the reality is, one property over happens to be the Hubble property, which the town owns. That's about 16 acres. Unfortunately, the Hubble property is not accessible. This property was purchased back in 2011 by the town through CPC funds. But unfortunately, there's no access to the public, other than maybe some of the neighbors who have an ability to go there. There's no parking lot. So Mr. Rankin is proposing that he will build a parking spot right there. So Mr. Rankin is proposing that he will build a parking spot right there on Border Street so that people have an opportunity to go there. Now, the only issue with that is, there is a gap between the parking lot and the Hubble property. And so it's hopeless that he will work with the two property owners. One is in, has mentioned last week during CPC hearing or meeting, that they will not give a right of access or easement if the home's built, but he will if the town purchases. So we'll be seeking some form of easement, or maybe a small purchase, if you will, of a sliver from the other property owner, so that the town will have an access from the parking lot to the Hubble property. In addition, the remaining ten acres, as I said, will be built, we provided you a rendering of like a farmhouse-style colonial, non-mansion, not the type of things that we've seen in the past nineties and 2000s, something that's gonna be used in the property. We also anticipate that there will be a tax revenue, a minimum of $20,000 per house. So that's gonna be a tax benefit of about $120,000 per year. There's also, as a result of purchasing this, it triggers what's called a clawback under Chapter 61A, that the sellers in this case line, its trust, will have to pay the town tax, back taxes, because it's agricultural, it's gonna be converted to residential, so they have to pay those taxes because they're underpaying the past few years under agricultural assumption, now they're gonna have to pay back. That's estimating about $100,000 minimum. In addition, there will be permitting, and the building will be six ounces, approximately $75,000 minimum. So just on those alone, you're, you're gonna be looking about, you know, almost $300,000 in one year, right out of the gate. And then annually, every year after, there'll be another $20,000 tax to, to the town, to pay for different things, just like many other locations, especially like we're talking to the infrastructure issue. Now, the proponents are suggesting to the town purchase it, the eighteen acres. And I think one thing that's important for the public to understand is that while the town is looking to purchase eighteen acres, the proponents are offering, I think it's the Gulf, the Gulf Association and.
Gulf River Association.
Which is a nonprofit that they're suggesting they're gonna raise $350,000. As of last Thursday, they mentioned to the CPC, they raised $280,000. So that means the town's gonna be responsible for the $2 million minimum. So you're buying eighteen acres for $2 million, but the reality is you're not buying ten acres for $2 million. And I think that's an important fact that everybody should understand. Mr. Rankin's gonna give you eight back. So really what the town's buying is ten acres for $2 million. That's $200,000 per acre. And I think the public should understand that when they decide that they're gonna vote for this at town meeting. Also, at least, purchasing this property by the proponents, they are suggesting that they may be able to build a parking lot. They represented two weeks ago to the advisory committee that they would. Last week, CPC, they're not sure they can. And I think the town and the people should understand whether or not that actually is going to happen or not, because if you purchase it for $2 million, there's still added costs for building a parking lot that's gonna be handicap accessible, as well as prevailing wage, which you're gonna have to pay for. That does not also include, are you gonna make trails? Now, it's important to understand from those renderings that have been presented, there are wetlands, there are delineation of, the area that's actually upland happens to be the actual hay field. And that's what everybody sees, and that's what everybody wants to preserve, which we totally understand. It's approximately five acres. The other acres with the parking lots, and the remaining area is wetlands. So if you're gonna be preserving this, you're preserving a hay field, which they've represented is going to be, I think, at a summer meeting to you folks, that they want to be able to hay, they, you know, sell. So your trails are gonna be on the hay field, if that's what you're looking for. It's not for the woods. And to somebody's credit last week, the gentleman had said, we're not buying this as border street woods, we're buying it for border street fields, for the field. And if that's what the public wants, so be it. But at least the facts are out there, you're buying five acres of field. I think it's also important to understand that, you know, when you're spending $200,000 per acre, you know, you're gonna be completing 600,000 of your CPC open fields, okay, your open space. They're also going to the general fund in CPC, which is gonna cover the remaining, which is approximately 1.6, actually no, 1.4, give or take. And, you know, those are things that are not gonna be able to use for your recreational fields. And I also think it's important that you're setting a bar up very high for all future and even present purchases. You know, my understanding is the Mordecai Lincoln property that the town went last year to purchase, from, I just sent this to CPC, $900,000. There is no purchase and sale agreement right now for those parties. And if that's the case, I suspect that the sellers are gonna take a look at this price of $2.3 million and say, maybe our property that is actually on the golf, that has presence, might be a little more expensive than $900,000. The other thing that I want to make sure that everybody understands is that you're also setting the bar for Chapter 61A. This is Chapter 61A, there's going to be this suggestion that all the other property that's been purchased in the past from the CPC funds, open space, with CPC funds, it wasn't Chapter 61A, we did the appraisal, most of the property came for $20,000, give or take, except for Mordecai Lincoln, as well as First Plut, the Sunset Property, different valuations, the, maybe through the appraisal. And if that's the case, you still have other Chapter 61A property in town. You need only go down Country Way, and you got the Stevens property, which directly abuts our water supply, which is significant. You also have I C Farms, which is on 123, heading out of town, as well as some other locations. If that's the case, then you're gonna be seeing those potential properties sold at premium. And that's the example that, you know, the bar that's being set for future purchases. So I think it's important, the reason why I be sent the letter was so that you folks on board would understand it, public could at least understand it and have a transparent, if you will, transparency with the facts. You know, Mr. Rankin is, is a contractor, he's been building homes in Hingham, lives in Hingham, wants to move to Citu, he's going to. He's not a developer. There was somebody who actually said, I know developers, I see them all the time, a developer says one thing, doesn't do it. I commit tonight, I will put it in writing, I'll send it to town council. These conditions that we're talking about, if successful, if the vote goes, does not go forward, that Mr. Rankin purchases it, that these conditions that I've told you tonight, that I put in the letter, are part of a binding agreement that he will follow through. And I also want to say here, that he's also prepared to donate $50,000 on pop-up building a parking lot, to access the whole property, for the building of a baseball field. I understand that there are issues with respect to a league field or little league field, he's prepared to even give that. I hear saying, my experience in town, I haven't seen somebody prepared to do that as, as part of their opportunity to try to purchase property. The last thing I did put in my letter, I do feel it's important that for transparency sake, is that, you know, that this property, if it's bought by the town, is bought by the town people, by its residents. There is a push by other organizations, and certainly the Gulf Association, saying that, you know, they want to purchase it with the town, and that's great, for donating potentially $280,000, maybe up to $350,000. But I think we need to know who are the people who are behind it. And I know that the proponent, Mr. McGoldrick, and I know he's here this evening, he's been here to the different meetings, but he's a Cohasset resident. He's a president of Black Rock Golf. He's also a partner in the Cohasset hospitality that is actually redeveloping the hotel on Cohasset waterfront. He's a developer, okay? He lives on Border Street, at 107 Border Street, nothing wrong with that. The Gulf Association, which is the Gulf Association, its principal office is at 107 Border Street. So I think it's important that, you know, we have a delineation of who's behind all this. There are people here, former National Trust people, I get it, and other people who advocate for open space. But there's a danger when we have people outside of our town coming in town, suggesting that they utilize town funds to purchase properties. And, yeah, I will say that nobody from CPC and Cohasset is donating any money to this. So I just think that, you know, from our perspective, on behalf of Mr. Rankin, we're here to answer any questions, but I wanted to thank you for the opportunity so that we can at least put forth our, what we will do and what we'll commit to in honor. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Danahy, for coming in. Thank you, Mr. Rankin. And we'll just start session with Andrew. Okay, welcome. She's laughing. Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Danahy, thank you very much for coming. You know, it is important for the, for the, to know what is being proposed, because that's what they're gonna choose between. I think you have used your considerable skills to lay out a lot of different issues. I must say, I take exception to almost all of that. I want to just note that I was the first one to raise this issue two years ago. I'm the one who called Gulf Association and asked them to participate and called the trustees of registration, hoping to buy that whole property, which was 25 acres, I think, well, it was more than that. And I've been working for two years to have this conversation and bring it before the, before the residents, to imply that an out-of-town with self-serving interests is behind it, is, I think, very disingenuous. There have been over a hundred, I'm sure more than George can say, at least 150 residents, some are self-serving, obviously, some are from Cohasset, the majority of it, I think is true, are from Citu, who are supporting this effort on the private fundraising factor. So that said, I have many, many concerns about the way this is presented, but bottom line is, it doesn't matter what's proposed to be there, and many of the proposals are straight, I'd like to share this with our planning directors here. It, it looks like a lovely proposal, but really what it comes down to is, does the community want anything developed there? And that's what we're gonna end up having to put forward to the community, regardless of value, you know, you can quantify, I don't, I think, I think that it's a little bit funny math, the way you presented it, and I would, and I would certainly, in front of the town, be able to articulate exactly what I think, but it just, the math doesn't work as we presented it. And we can talk about whether or not, you know, the loss of revenue to the town for this proposal is worth the preservation of this land, and that's a very valid, valid thing to consider, but it's really gonna come down to, does, do the residents of this town think this particular property, as presented, and the only way we can buy it is fair market 61A, it's not comparable to the Mordecai Lincoln or the others, because it's totally different, it's apples and oranges. And it's just gonna come down to what the community feels is important. Obviously, I think this is very important, because that's why I called these people to help try to find where to preserve it. So I'm very committed to seeing this work. And appreciate you bringing this in, and it is important for everyone to see it. I don't know, we'll share this online, it is public document, everyone wants to see it. But those, that's my clip notes, because I'm. Do you mind if I do a stand?
And, Bourbon?
Yeah.
Absolutely. Hold the argument.
Do you do my laptop?
It's, it's a public document, it should be shared with anybody. And actually, she got it before. First of all, I'm gonna say, it's not fun, it's fuzzy magic, fun math, okay? Second of all, and to all the residents, we should know, the town should know who actually is behind the bill, all the people. You know, you say you don't know, you should know.
Well, they have the list I have in front of me.
I think that's important for people in the town to understand, how many people are from Citu. If the majority is Citu, that's great. If it's less than that, that's important for people to understand, but we disagree.
It's not the first time.
May I, can I interest, the one thing I want to address, what you just said there, second of all, which I kind of take offense to, funny math, okay? That's a blatant statement that's, first of all, it's wrong, okay? The numbers are, I sat down with a member of the board here who is an assessor, okay? And he actually gave me the numbers. It's $140,000 a year in revenue. No, 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 you had your, you had your say, okay? You had your say. You had your say, okay? $140,000 a year, okay? That is, is, will be generated per year or a 10-year period, that's 1.4 million. I sat here for about a half an hour, 45 minutes, listened to a presentation before about schools in this town, about a study that needs 1.1 million dollars. You have it right here, you have it from this project. You're spending money that this town needs, and you're gonna spend that money, and you're telling me it's not wise to do it? It's not, it's not, to, to go spend 2.3 or 2 million, plus the clawback, plus the revenue that's generated, it's a three and a half million dollar investment that the town has to make sure, that people have to make sure they're aware of. And not only that, the precedence that you're setting with other developers in this town is, let's forget about the town, let's go in here and let's put a 40B in on this land. Let's draw the facts out here. Citu is not in the numbers in the 40B, okay? They haven't hit their numbers. I could come in here and turn around and propose a 40B for this, for this land, and possibly they ask 2.5 for it, I offered 3, 2350, and it was put under agreement, okay? First of all, from my assessment of the thing was, I, I was only understanding that was presented to me that the town is not in a position to buy it, whether that's true or not, but that's the position that was presented to me from real estate and the people that were selling it, from the seller's representation, that the town is not in a position to buy this property. I have sat with John, John is a well-respected person in this town, has been sat on that board, okay? Well-respected person, and that's why, and my position with John is, that if I can come into this town and build responsibly in this town, okay? Then maybe it sets a precedence for future development in this town. Maybe it sets a precedence that people can come in and actually give back. I looked at my own country, which I left 32 years ago, and watched development of 400 houses, 300 houses in different spots, and not a dime was given back to put in a swingset in, in an area. Not a dime was given back from all these developers, nothing. That land is an iconic piece of land, I know that, but the perception, and let's get the facts out here, because the perception of that land is that land is Cohasset, not Citu, okay? It is Citu, but the perception is, it's not. I've spoken with many people in this town that don't even know Border Street exists because they don't come that direction or drive that direction. I'm not saying everyone, but there is a number of people in this town that don't even know that street exists, okay? I'm buying it for a reason, to make money. No question, my hand is up on that one, okay? But there's a way to make money and work with towns. And when I said to John when I came and I met with him, see what he worked with me on the project, is that I will turn around and set a precedence, that if there is another piece of land in this town that CPC have an issue with buying, that I could possibly get a leg in and get a, get a jumpstart on. That's what I'm looking to do. I don't change that opinion, I haven't changed that opinion with John, exactly, but I do not understand the amount of money that's gonna be wasted on 10 acres of land, or 18 acres, when the town is gonna get eight acres back. And the trail had to be put in, then I guarantee you, I could, I could put a bet on with you now, that if the town bought it, that trail had to not put in. Guarantee you, because I've listened to some of the stories over the last, I'm not from Citu, I, I applaud everything that you guys do. My father did this at home for a community at home, and he was the last one to get the thanks, never got a thanks. And you guys have to make hard decisions every day. I understand that. And the 1.1 million that you talked about spending on this, on, on the, the study, is 2.3 million, 2.5 million there, in land that you're gonna spend money, and you're gonna, and you're gonna take that away in the study on schools? I don't know. That's my two cents. Sorry if I overheated a bit.
Sorry, you're in the air.
Yeah?
Can I just clarify? Yes, one thing. No, I'm in. I, I apologize, I didn't make myself clear. I, the, the value of the development and the money that we're becoming in the town is absolutely accurate, and I understand that. And that's, that was my point about, we're just deciding whether we want to develop at all. Your proposal, from a development standpoint, is probably the best it could be there.
I don't want to fight with any town. It's not, I don't have the time to. It's not, I don't have the time to get into fights. My position was that I thought the town was not in the position. I met with George about a week or two after. I put this under agreement, and I told him exactly what I was doing. I told him I was going to donate eight acres back. Does it benefit to me donating eight acres back? Again, my hand is up, there is a benefit, no questions asked. But there's trails there that can be used. All that has to be done is the wall has to be opened up a little further, and a trailhead can be put in. That's what I'm proposing, and eight acres. I say eight, I'm generalizing, it could be 7.9, I want to make sure that it's clear. Okay, it could be 8.5, but eight acres for generalization, so.
Yeah, so what I was referring, just to clarify, was characterization, the cost per acre, taking that out, taking the house out, taking what John was referring to. I think it means an artificial perception of what the cost is.
If you're buying 10 acres, you're spending $2 million. If you buy 10, the $2 million, it's 200,000, it's that simple, Karen. If you want to go 18 acres, that's fine, then it goes down to 1.30, but he's giving back, he's giving back eight.
But you get houses, there's a trade-off there. But we can talk about this online, but I was not referring to the interpretation of the cost of the town. 100%, it is, it is a good cost, and then that's what I mean, and the town will have to make that decision.
Yeah.
Is this development, me, you know?
I understand, the people in this town are going to have, the people in town will have to, but I think the facts have to be put out there correctly. That's, that's all I'm asking, the facts can be put out correctly, that's simple.
I will defer my, what others have to say.
Just so, no one can shut anyone off. If all the other members of the board would like to chime in, and then we give it back to you. So I'm not trying to control this conversation, all right?
Oh, that's your job, man.
I didn't, I didn't.
Just want to be clear. So Tony, do you want to go?
Sure, I'll give it a shot. So, well, first of all, both of you have good points. Mr. Danny, I appreciate you coming in and giving the side of the builder in town, and Karen has a great point, it's going to come before the town, you know? They're going to decide whether they want to spend the money for the property. You have to, you have to lay out the true picture of both sides of what you're getting. We have found that this town generally goes towards open space. But we also know that there is self-interest, and a lot of people are involved in the property, in any property. I'm not a huge proponent in town chasing land to buy, because there's going to be another piece of property in six months that someone's going to want, that there's going to be neighbors that are going to want a development there. And there's going to be one, two months, you know, two years after that, it's just going to continue to happen. This is a nice piece of property, and you're building or developing over a town, it's nice. I mean, it's not a 40B with 700 apartments that is really, you know, not fitting in that neighborhood well. You know, we can debate all of this stuff online, but it really doesn't matter. It's going to come before the town, and the town's going to decide whether they want to spend $2 million over CPC money, which is really, taxpayers don't really see that as tax dollars, it is tax dollars, or to develop this piece of land. And there's only so much land in Citu, I mean, that's the, that's the part that is going to go against this development. Many people will pay anything they want for the land, because there's not enough. So, I don't know, I like your development. I like the fact that the people that are wanting to buy it are putting up money for it and participating in it. I think, I don't like the threat of a 40B, if you come and do that, and I think that was appropriate, but I understand the heat of the moment. But ultimately, it's going to go before the town, and whoever goes and votes is going to be which way it goes. That's all.
More? I would just say, I appreciate the information, I think it's important to present it to the public, you know, both sides, so I do appreciate you bringing it forward. And as Tony said, your town meeting board is going to decide on this, right? I am concerned about paying this large amount, because do you think it does set a precedent for us as board and as a town? That's a real discussion, right, that comes forward on top floor. That's one of my biggest concerns, is how it's going to pay for it, because of what we have done in the past. That's where I stand right now today.
Yeah, I mean, where I stand is, let's say the town didn't have the option to buy, and developers said, hey, there's eight acres, we can jump in for joy. And it's the $2 million, right, it's going to have to come in front of the voters to see if they want that, but that $2 million would be used for other areas and other needs that you can do. And I'm nervous that, you know, to control development is, I don't know, that's CPC's best avenue, because I hear that's really the lane that you'd be in, I think that's what a land bank and other things do. So now I do, I'm very concerned about the person that is sending, whether that's the best value for the taxpayer dollars.
Well, I could just chime in. I actually approached the chair of the CPC in Cohasset, and via email, he basically told me to get lost. He said he didn't want to get in trouble. I agree with you, in fact, Mrs. Bleeby let me put some marque signs up in front of her property when I was running for election, and I kept saying to Sean Harris, who did the deal for me, I'm like, are you sure that's Citu? Isn't that really Citu? And that's been here since 1965, so I...
How's yours going today?
The other thing I would like to just point out is that a few years ago, CPC allocated 2.9 million dollars to Bill Lawson Green. The affordable housing trust contributed another 400,000. In my math, that's 2.5 million dollars that the town invested through CPC and through the housing trust, which was funded by CPC, to invest in that property. And today, we have very affordable housing units for people over 62. And so I think it's fair to point out that there are other legitimate reasons to use CPC funds. And this is going to defeat CPC. I'm also concerned about the precedent that is sent. I think this whole board has expressed concerns about the price, I think you'd be forced not to say. It's a long one. So, I agree, I think this is going to go before town meeting, as it should. And we understand that CPC did vote in favor of it, so they weigh in. And we'll have to vote and weigh in, but what it really matters is if it gets to town meeting, which we still have to take a vote, as to whether or not to exercise our right of first refusal, making the clauses in there. So that's where I'm on this. Anyone else?
We're just voting to whether or not to support it.
Yes.
For town meeting, but our right of refusal expires after town meeting. But we're going to have to vote before. No, Rachel, well, that's something we can discuss, but we can, we could.
How are we going to buy it, we have CPC support.
We do have CPC support.
No, if the town votes, if town meeting votes in town.
Right, if we vote before town meeting, we won't have the funds. A vote on the right of first refusal.
Let me understand, my understanding of it is that if we don't, if we vote to exercise our right of first refusal, it goes to town meeting?
No.
No.
Yeah, so the way that it works is...
That's why the town meeting is the 20, and Burbank, the 10th and first row.
Thank you.
That's why town meeting was October 26th, before 120 days ran out. So, this will go before town meeting. If it fails at town meeting, then the board will exercise, or not exercise, you write a first refusal, it comes after, not before. I'm not sure that's correct.
Well, I think, I think you voted to exercise it, but you have 120 days to vote.
We didn't know that.
Whatever.
We just...
All your voting tonight is...
Just he, all of you are correct.
Yeah, yeah, that's it. We will iron out when we do the vote on right of first refusal. But I've had a number of conversations with Jim. Anyway, so we'll figure that out. Any questions from the audience? It's all been said.
Thank you.
It's all been said. Yes, sir?
George McGoldrick, 107 Water Street, Nebraska. So I do have something just in this project, I'm still going to go over it. And I'm going to tie water from a single Citu. And anyone in this room, anyone in our party of us who are concerned about the health of the river, I'm talking about the Royal Golf Association, the last thing you have to do is to do that. And the Treasure Golf Association, which is why that's my address. My annual course, which are these, give lots of users security, the FBS, I'm out of this, so that's why it says no second election. Golf Association is made up of 50 to 70 people touching $2,000. Probably not half Cohasset and Citu, it's not just people that live on the river, people that live all over town. There's been 265 people that have donated between $10 and $30,000 over the last six years. We have over $325,000, we're within sight of our role within $1,000, which is 15% of purchase price. I find it hard to understand people saying that this will set a precedent, because actually, the purchase price was set by Mr. Rankin. When he put the offer in front of the Blakey family, he set the price. We didn't set the price, town did set the price, Mr. Rankin. And then financial argument that it's too much money, I don't follow that logic. The fact of the matter is that there is significant interest for this, or people that want to look at it, and they try to buy it. People have walked the trails that we can connect to Hubble. The butters that live on Water Street have offered to give eastwards to the town, so that we can connect the 18 acres to the 40 acres. And we've walked it two weeks ago, it's very treable. And those butters have stated the last meeting that they would not grant adhesment if there were houses on it, because it would make any sense for them to create value for their property by having those open spaces. It's important from an environmental standpoint, because those six houses are in suck. And there is a stream that runs down gradient of the property that flows directly to the Gulf River. And so now you're adding six more subjects to the Gulf River. And that's my self-interest. Yes, early awarded, that's my self-interest, it's the subject issues. People want it because they want to see the wildlife, people want it because they want the trails. I don't keep the rules when it's possible.
And Mr. McGoldrick, I will editorialize by saying the town of Citu has been trying like heck to get the town of Cohasset to agree to sewer North Citu, including, we've agreed, if for searing, we would go down in Water Street. We don't, we're better, no, we don't. We've been put off, and put off, and put off, and put off. If your real concern is the health of the Gulf River, we need some real muscle to help us with Cohasset on this thing. It has gone on far too long. And it's not your fault, but you bring up the health of the Gulf River, also bringing up the health of Bassam Beach, and everything down there, so...
I'll take you out to my next mission, that is.
Awesome.
Just two quick comments, but again, one, you aren't a butter, so they're, you know, very close to being a butter, so there is an interest, as well as your neighbors, right, I assume. But the other thing about the price is, the only reason CPC can pay this amount of money is because it's a section 61. And that's what throws off it. If that, if this was just a piece of land, then CPC wouldn't be able to pay that amount of money. So that's, again, this is all just educational stuff. It's going to come before the town, whoever happens to go to that meeting. But I think it's very important that all these things are pointed out to everybody, so that they can make an informed decision. And there's good and there's bad, you know, there's, like I said, some people will pay anything for acre for open space. That's not, there's not right or wrong answer, it's just how people feel, so. So I'd like to get all the information out there, and let people look at it, and then make their decision based on what they think.
I live a half run away, so I don't think that's in butter. It definitely, and interesting in preserving it. And yes, the butters have, almost every butter has put some money in, but there's 265,000.
I am very impressed, I am very impressed by the amount of people that are doing it. People that I see at E's, I didn't, don't even know the neighborhood, so, who like the field. So that is a very impressive number, I won't give it up.
Do you have a sense of how many Icetua residents, Mr. Danny's point, can you tell?
We haven't looked exactly yet, but I'd kind of say close to 80 to 90%.
Actually?
80 and a half, 80 to 90% of the 265 Citu residents?
Those are the numbers. Not the numbers. Thank you.
Anyone else? No? Well, thank you very much for coming in.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, folks, appreciate it. Thank you.
As I said, I'm not saying I'm against open space, but...
Yeah, you shouldn't.
So that's okay.
Thank you.
Red Sox are happy enough.
Thank you. Thank you for your time, I appreciate it.
All right, next on our agenda is the architecture and vote of the work. Some way to send it over, okay? Do you want to do the widow's walk? Well, you're special, widow's not called a license change of manager alteration. Hello? Start board, you're here, I have to be. Workers want liquor licenses, okay? Currently, as you've been on the layer, there's renovation going on in the widow's walk. It's coming to renewal time for the licenses. At the same time, Mears, who was the last liquor license manager there, North River Corral has known a lot of the name. So we want to bring the records up to date, the liquor license renewal for 2022, and appoint Ian Kelly as the liquor manager in the interim, until we have an agreement with the new licensing for the restaurant, so that we can continue to keep our liquor licenses. In addition, the alteration promise will need to be done to accommodate the new renovated building. We'd like to do that at the same time, and to include the entire 18-hole golf course for our beverage car ongoing, which has never been included in our licenses in the past. Well, we don't want to be a violation, right?
Exactly.
Trying to keep everything kosher.
Yes.
So we thought, since we are creating, we'll let's do the application to the ABCC, and that's what we're going to see there.
Questions, Tony?
The one, if it wasn't an acre, are we allowed to...
Yes, an alteration of process and change of managers is not required to be published in the newspaper. We would not.
I'm prepared for that question.
Another question?
Yes. Will Ian be required to be tip certified? I mean, I know it's not they open right now, but I just, I just want to make sure.
Yes, we've asked him to be, to be tip certified, and he also, you know, has submitted everything he needs to submit for the ABCC allocation.
Okay. Anyone else?
No, seems like...
For the motion, please. Who said this, like, or approve a change of manager for widow's walk to Ian Kelly?
Second? Second, my Mr. Daniel, all in favor? I'm on it. My next, your motion, Karen. And we're going to select or further improve the alteration of precedence for widow's walk to improve the renovations in the restaurant, bar patio, and the extension to the 18-hole golf course and dry and rain via beverage car services.
Second?
Second, my Mr. Daniani, all in favor? I'm on it. Last, your motion, Karen. Next on our agenda is update veterans' statements. I'm just going to give you the email that Moran received from Joey Kelly. At 11:00 AM, the Citu American Legion will perform a flag-raising ceremony along with a rifle salute. There will also be a luncheon served at the senior center. A live veteran-based band, I'm sorry, a live veteran-based band performing at the senior center. A live veterans band base, base, I'm sorry, a live veteran-based band performing at the senior center. Members of the Citrus Food pantry will also provide their separate annual salute to veterans with special gifts. Um, they're also doing a December seventh Pearl Harbor Day event. The Veterans Poetry Council sponsoring a veterans breakfast at the senior center, holiday outreach to veterans. I think they'll probably have more details at some point in terms of. There are the planning stages now. Yeah, um, a little later on time before you will be the liquor license for the, uh, veterans lunch in the senior center. Okay.
Where will the senior center?
Where will the Michael salute be? All right, that's, it's going to be on the dot. It doesn't say. Yeah, it has, doesn't say. They have a side and room. That's why I said we have details. Okay.
Details to all, so.
Okay, we just wanted to give an update. Yeah, um, it's coming.
Sixty years, Paul Allen, is that right?
Is it? Nice to meet you.
Seventy, seventy-eight.
So which is it?
Forty-four, forty-sixteen, eighty, eighty, alright.
So.
Ask Nancy.
No, it's forty-one, right? Yeah, so eight. Yeah, Sean was eight, thirty-five.
He's not, unfortunately, he doesn't watch anymore. So, um, our next, I already covered article four, usability study.
Well, we didn't have to vote it.
Well, I. I'm, so, I, so we covered it. I didn't say we voted it. Okay. Okay. Well, since we did that slightly out of order, if you want to vote that now or do you want to vote the other? Article six. We'll just support article four. Second, my Mr. Karen, all in favor? I'm on. Any votes?
One.
Motion, Harris, four, one. Article six, community federation. We did get a memo from Dan with a description of all the articles. It, it came in a separate, um. It's actually in the meeting, it's in the meeting deck. I've got some pages, some backup because there are two things that said TBD with Dan Clark today. Yeah. Oh. Okay, cool, I see. So, I personally think this, one project by one project. Also, I can provide you with a list of Warren articles that I printed out for you. And they're all listed on there as well.
Maybe we could do all of thirteen. Seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve. Let me, uh, maybe I can second clarify each twelve from the ninety-four baseball team. They moved to support seventy-five thousand dollars for design and. Design, we can, my part. Anything you want to design?
Uh, community engagement bidding.
Yeah, to get it ready. It's called design.
Designs, I mean, studying some.
At some future meeting, we'll have to discuss how we want to allocate the toll roads.
Okay. Was the location determined?
I mean, that's what the public.
That's.
It's part of the study.
Yeah.
So, uh, the public has to have three, four meetings and. Even when you're on the side of the.
I ask a question about that. Yes, of course. Um, I want to jump all around it. Didn't we do that, wasn't that in the study?
Yeah, it was.
That we already did. First of all, the athletic fields. When we did, yeah, sorry, when we did a whole athletic, that big monster thing, wasn't this discussion in that study?
Well, what's to go behind?
Gates.
Gate school. But since then. Things have changed and so CPC felt they should have a little more discussion, come up with a solid. In the, make, make, or, you know, have, have some meetings that's prior to what they asked for last night.
If I may, Derek, I'm with the side of the West Street. The vote that was taken by your board in twenty nineteen in November was taken prior to the installation of the light posts in the parking lot for the senior center. Which changed the feasibility of putting the field ads was under, understood by U P A when you voted. Therefore, it seems appropriate to consider now we have to change the orientation, change the dimensions, consider, you know, different abiding.
Right.
Property services.
In the.
Exactly, and so, yes, you did vote to say recreation site should be decided to afford on. But of course, I think you reserve the right to change your minds if we come up with reasons why that might be the vote. We just don't want to, again, because there were different circumstances when you voted on the issue.
Well, and I suppose it's better to start slow. And not wind up with a lot of objections after the fact.
Exactly.
And, you know, I, the woman liked to know. Where, why, where, why is that light post there? I mean, that light post would be somewhere else, I mean, it just seems ridiculous.
I would love to know the same.
So, but I'm going to.
That's in the best.
Like a therapist. So, anyway, so that's seventy-five. So on the. Articles we have in front of us, the rain gives. Number twelve. Right. Question, I think, because. We wrote article six. I think we should take them out in a time. Right, 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 that's all right. That's fine. So, does anyone want to make a motion? I think Tommy made the motion on the ball available seven, five. Okay.
I did.
I'll, I'll make a motion for article seven through twelve.
Seven through twelve, so, okay.
This is four, so.
Seven, by Mr. Karen, all in favor? I'm on. So that leaves us with red acquisition, Eastfield, Borishu. Anyone want to make a motion?
We can discuss ourselves to.
Yeah, well, I mean, I obviously will make a motion to, uh, support the acquisition of Eastfield on Borishu. Motion made by Mr. Campbell, second. No, second.
I'll second.
Good thinking. All right.
I'll second for both.
We have to go over here and finish thinking, so.
Well, Tony, Tony second.
Second by Mr. Dan, right?
Yeah.
All in favor? I.
Make a motion, I just support article thirteen.
Second, and I can, I second.
All in favor?
I'm on.
Aye.
I'm on.
All motion.
Uh, so motion, Harris, to not support the article. How did you vote, Karen? Not just, I seconded, okay, okay, not just support.
I, I just, it's.
It, when you get thirty. It's causing units for that kind of investment.
There's no record.
I, I know, but, I mean, I, I love it, trust me, I love it. I, I, I get it, but. Anyway, all right. So. Next. Do we have to go to all these articles or we go to some of them? Okay, girls. No, we've already developed, okay. You only, you only have article four and article six. Then we have the consent agenda and then sign the articles for special. Okay, so article four, so we already concluded article six, yes. So you vote now on article four. Right, so article four is a feasibility study in the Mandel Design for Padle Elementary School, the one point one million dollars. Right, capital planning, our, any, three, zero. So I like my motion.
Didn't we just do it?
Yeah, we did.
No, we didn't vote on it.
Talked about it.
Number four?
Yes.
No, article four, article four. You voted article six.
No, we did four prior to.
I'll do it again. It was four one.
Oh, okay. Oh, yeah, I have it. All right, okay, I already typed it. I'm sorry.
Sure.
It's ten past ten, it's my bedtime. All right, I'm sorry, I apologize. My mistake, my mistake as well. Yes, anything else? Consent agenda.
Need to accept a consent, uh, work on just.
No, I, I.
So the consent agenda is just one, two, three, seven, eight.
Yeah. May I move a second?
I move, uh, I move a motion, I move at the half of the.
That's what we said, thanks, everyone. Except, yeah, you're right.
Except the consent agenda.
Second. Second, my. This can't be, this, I, I started it. It turned to me. Ms. Campbell, second. All in favor?
I.
So, my, your, you still made up your mind?
I said I. It's getting crazy, everybody.
Okay, the last thing we are to do for town meeting is to look at the list of articles to see which one we will be representing, which topic. I mean, you can decide tonight or you can decide at the next meeting. Whatever, that person would have to, to, to. You, I could chair.
The chair.
We can put it on the agenda for the next meeting, it's all right. Ben? Give people time to think about what we have to represent. Yeah, you have the list, you have the final votes. Of all the committees.
I'll do one, two, three, seven, and eight.
So, you know. Like a set list. You're still sharp at this hour of the night. Okay, so we're going to do this at the next meeting, all right?
Yeah.
Madame, here, we ask a question, please. Um, at some meeting tonight or at the next meeting, I need the blood fortune signed off on the funding mechanism for article four.
Yes, I actually wrote that down. Yes, can you explain that, you're a paper man?
That is, our leader here is Nancy. We have so much time, this is just so happy to have you.
There's your plan. I have no bounds because I've.
My bench is about quarters of my couch.
Yes, I did.
Five hundred grand, we've got.
Did you hear that I said that?
That could go.
Two hours ago, and we're waiting for that word, I noticed it. That. Will also be to the year, uh, uh, executive session, that almost threw a wrench in the horse depending on how that came up. That was the second funding source.
The capital money they haven't spent yet.
The capital money they haven't spent yet, the ones that we can have are on there. So I already reviewed that list with, um, Dr. Dutch. And there are a couple of leftovers that we can have from their capital plan. Um, the other things they're actually spending as they, they spoke about.
About their surplus that they announced last night.
That wasn't, that was surplus property, it was a surplus budget that they just.
The basis is mostly.
Yeah.
How, they, they sell surplus property, it will not go back to them, it'll just close out the free cash with a general receipt.
Uh. So we can't keep them.
Yeah, it goes back to free cash.
Right, and we're going to back up the timeline.
Since I have had them sold, the books that are over in El Gates, and I will continue to sell the books that are over in El Gates because they keep selling them. I mean, there's a room full of just leftover textbooks that have been decommissioned.
From the old gates?
So they, they come from all the schools and they just, they come into this one room, El Gates, and they keep selling it to auction and people keep buying them.
Wow. I mean, you are using the kindergarten money that was allocated.
Well, that's, that's the main one. Sure, so the, um, the hundred three thousand was at the special town meeting last spring for COVID-nineteen expenses. But we weren't sure, I mean, if we were going to have any more, we were able to make do with what we had in the budgets and what we got from the CARES Act. So we never needed it, we shouldn't need these funds. Um, the second one, which is the Kibbutz Cemetery.
Excuse me, can I ask a question about that? Is that COVID funds from the town side?
Yes, it was out of free cash.
Okay.
Um, the Kibbutz Cemetery, uh, this is leftover funds from the project. I have checked with all the different departments responsible for this. Um, this is beyond what is needed for that settlement that was, um, discussed today. Those funds are already set aside for this.
So we talked about, we, me and Kevin, about adding some additional fencing around there.
They, they released the funds. I mean, we can not take all of it, I mean, eighty-five thousand, I can leave like five thousand there. Um, there's also.
Works over around the cemetery?
Yeah, particularly where, um, where we clean up that fence by the baseball field that comes in. Over, over there. They kind of clean up that, the front edge so nobody falls off that hill onto, uh. What seems like. So.
I can just get, come in, what do you think the estimate is?
Yeah, if we could clean up, there's a few things we wanted to clean up it, so.
Just write that in words, I can actually read. Um, and then a hybrid kindergarten, that, that four hundred and fifty thousand was at the last fall special town meeting. It was for the twenty twenty to twenty twenty-one school year for the hybrid kindergarten. If we didn't get reimbursement through the CARES Act, and we did get reimbursement through the CARES Act. Um, so it was never used. It did come from stabilization, so you could choose not to use this and later on, or if that gave stabilization. Um, it, for me, it just, you know, it was an available resource that already had stabilization for school purpose. This was a school purpose, or it was a free cash stabilization. The stabilization time pass over five million dollars in it, and it will have even more after we set, actually, the fairly growth is going to be higher than we expect.
Stabilization doesn't pass?
No.
Or, excuse me.
Stabilization currently has five million, three hundred and four thousand dollars in it.
So we're, for the one point one million, we're literally taking half from stabilization and half from free cash, the rest is, that's not on the score.
Yeah. And there's, there's some other smaller articles, but if you, I even want to make it.
You're just cleaning up a mess with this.
So I'm cleaning up.
Fifty-three dollars?
Don't you remember the public safety conference, wait?
That pays for one copy of the entire record.
These, this is what I would recommend.
I don't have one of the last ones.
It was from free, it was from available funds, free cash for gates, it's seven hundred and fifty thousand.
Who's the one point one estimate from, is that from?
That, this, that was the school department ordering the N S V A.
Oh, and I think they've, they've still want to pay for the gate standard that they added and watching what they saw in the call.
Yeah, they discussed it at the capital credit. And, and if it does proceed forward and they do get an N S V A, we can get forty percent of this. App or community fee for the project, we manage less for whatever project comes out of this.
So I guess in my opinion, the only item that I have discussion is the four fifty that came out of stabilization, not of free cash. So, do we ever intend to put that back in the stabilization or you're just saying keep, never put it back in the, keep stabilization in the project?
Stabilization is going to get another sizable infusion.
What size of?
Probably one or five hundred thousand from the article eleven that was open in April because a new book, um, was just submitted as part of the financial forecast discussion earlier this evening. Um, new growth has been submitted at one point six million. It was, um, so it's well above what we thought it was going to be because total progress is moving along quite well. Plus they had a few other things. Joe thinks it will be, uh, Joe gave it a drug assessing picture, it'll be certified, some of it came one point four seven five and this one point six.
New growth?
Yeah. So that, because of the timing of the year, that would get captured with article eleven, including stabilization.
Yeah, that's not good. The question is how do we feel about taking one out of our savings account instead of our checking account?
And that's how we're having this discussion.
Say, we didn't want to take it out of here to have a free cash?
Yeah.
So Tony, you suggesting that we take the four fifty from hybrid kindergarten and put it back into stabilization?
I'm not suggesting, I think that's the, that's the one thing in my head that I'm thinking that I would think about.
Yeah. But I'm just making more of an inserted nightmare, uh, again, it's already out, so we don't have to go to take it out. I understand your, your point that really coming from free cash really is coming from those unspent funds, right? That potentially could come back from the schools as well. That potentially could come back from the schools as well, or would not, but anyway.
So what's our benchmark?
It's a discussion we haven't had yet as to where we want it to, what are the haps.
Is that financial policy?
It is, it, it, it's our reserve discussion.
We've had, we've had some discussions that we've used about it.
Yeah, I mean.
It's higher, I mean, we know that three to half.
Yeah, everyone thought it's more within three to five percent of, of bounds. Um, I mean, or, or your general operating radius. Um, and we're just about there, it could go higher, but question is, how much do you want stabilization, how much do you want capital stabilization? Because stabilization, for the most part, we use it for other things, but for the most part, it's there for emergencies, loan costs, and disasters. And the capital stabilization, we put stuff aside for big projects that we're planning for and then using it. So, I mean, we haven't had that discussion. I think five point three million is a healthy balance. Um, I had the new towns where it's been higher. Um, but, you know, and, and the town where it was higher, when they used it, the credit rating, credit rating agencies were all over us for doing it. We built it for a specific purpose, where we used it for a specific purpose, we were keen on it to.
It's high, it's something.
And, and it's gonna get a little bit higher. That's why I felt comfortable at least proposing this deal. But it doesn't have to, I mean, you can leave it on, leave it where it is, it's not, it's not gonna close out the states here, it's family protection. And you don't have to decide tonight, but I am, I need your guidance.
One five.
I mean, I can be splitting here, seeing for free cash and stabilization, why make this even more, you know, more complicated than that was. More complicated than it already is. That's my two cents. No, I agree with you.
I think we would, I'll read that as a motion, that motion has been approved by Cam Maslow. I'll just make the adjustment for the, um, card work.
Um, one other thing, well, can you give us, uh, I know the past, we've asked for a breakdown of how free cash.
Any thoughts?
If you want anything else, I can't do it, my computer just lost that.
Go ahead.
If you want to walk.
It's telling us to stop. And when our machine runs out of tape, then we're really done.
Right, they have a chart.
All right, so what, okay. There you go. All right, so we're all settled with special town meeting, yes. Now, we can get on to discuss both one day, the licenses, and one last day, then as the two children.
License all outlawed, Voyager, one fourteen, March, November, eleven, twenty twenty-one, from ten thirty a.m. until two thirty p.m. America, moving to one thirty-four, a non-profit for private event at the Citrix Center on November eleventh, twenty twenty-one, from ten thirty a.m. until two thirty p.m.
Second, second by Ms. Canfield, all in favor?
Aye.
One zero, motion carries.
Move to approve of one day wine and malt beverage license to a fourth in the road at six Union Street, number class. For a private event at the Citrix Airtime Center on one nineteen, every pressure road on October twenty-second, twenty twenty-one, from six p.m. until ten.
Second, second by Ms. Curran, all in favor?
Aye.
Five zero, motion carries. We'll discuss what you can do, what you can do, we got shoot. What else?
It's current, I printed it out.
Talk about a couple.
Should I have a motion?
Um, Ray, is there anything you need to know about any reason?
Well, I was just recommending, um, you know, several of these people interviewed previously that weren't here this evening. Specifically, Richard Beethman, Charlie Richard, and Matthew McKinnon. Two of them were interested in several committees, so I tried to slot everybody on the committee. Uh, based on your interest. Um, and I wanted to know about, for example, Mr. Beethman was interested in Sisters City Island Coastal Advisory and Beach Commission. So I'm suggesting that you put this, possibly appoint Mr. Beethman to the Beach Commission. Um, Matthew McKinnon McKinley, again, was interested in T E I, which was already filled, Coastal Advisory, and Sisters City Island.
Did we get a nice email from him, though?
We did. Yeah, we did, about Coastal Advisory, so my recommendation was to appoint him as a resident in the coastal advisory, and Charlie Richard as a resident coastal, coastal advisory. Um, and then you would have the three openings for Sisters City Island, for Mr. Canada, and Mr. Quinney, and Mr. Volker. So all of the people will have a spot.
I think that's very wonderful.
But, you know, I don't know if you have something else in mind, and then we have the new ones, basically.
We had such great candidates, you know, I mean, all, all season.
We had candidates all season, yeah, really great. And actually, voting this, we're finished with formal committee appointments.
May I share with my motion?
I would.
Who took twenty, Mark Devereaux and Christopher Lassar to the Veteran Services Advisory Council for a term of three years, or until a successor is named, and completion of the conflict of interest law online training program is completed within thirty days.
Second.
Second by Mr. Ben Haring, all in favor?
Was it Mr. Goodrich?
I think it was Mr. Goodrich, it was second.
How does it, no.
Um, maybe I'm not here to have more.
No, I.
We both say time.
Okay.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Well, whoever's closest to me gets it.
All right, that's fine, sorry.
It's all right. You want to be all there? I, I think we got interrupted, right?
You got me, yeah.
Aye. Okay. Who took point, Steer Dwyer to the Council on Aging for a term of three years, or until a successor is named, and completion of the conflict of interest law online. Training program is completed within thirty days.
Second.
Second by Mr. Goodrich, all in favor?
Aye.
Five zero, motion carries. All right, move to appoint James Kim and Vincent Quilly Jr. and Raymond Volker to the Sisters City Island Committee for a term, excuse me, for a term of two years, or until a successor is named, and completion of the conflict of interest law online training program is completed within thirty days. Second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Goodrich. To my left, we're behaving, to my right, you're talking. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Five zero, motion carries. Move to reappoint. Shablon Hunter, John Sullivan, Brendan O'Connor, Molly Dinsmore, and Carol Sullivan Healy to the Sisters City Island Committee for a term of two more years, or until a successor is named, and completion of the conflict of interest law online training program is completed within thirty days.
Second.
Second by Mr. Goodrich, all in favor?
Aye.
Five zero, motion carries.
Move to appoint Richard Beethman to the City of Beach Commission for a term of two years, or until a successor is named, and completion of the conflict of interest law online training program is completed within thirty days.
Second? Second by Miss Curran.
Oh, 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 are we? Second. Sorry, we're doing a long time.
All right, second by Ms. Curran, all in favor?
Aye.
Five zero, motion carries, only two more to go.
Move to appoint Charlie Richard and Matthew, uh, I can't, I can't, McKinley to the Coastal Leadership Commission for a term of one year, until a successor is named, and completion of the conflict of interest. While online training program, excuse me, is completed within thirty days.
Second? Second, second by Ms. Curran, all in favor?
Aye.
Move to reappoint Jonathan Grant to the Coastal Advisor Commission for a term of one year, or until a successor is named, and completion of the conflict of interest. While online training program is completed within thirty days.
Second? Second, I'm really happy Jonathan is, but I think Jonathan is excellent, so thank you for your opinion. All right.
Aye.
Aye. No, aye. Okay, aye. All right. Liaison. Can I just ask a point of order here?
Yes.
Did we, um, vote on petition, the citizens' petition? We did not.
Um, did I vote on that the last meeting?
I'll just check in there.
Oh, yeah, we did.
I'm pretty sure we did.
I think I voted in favor of it.
Yeah.
There's three.
Did you vote no?
Yeah, I'm pretty sure.
We only voted on the last meeting on one of your articles.
Because you would draw on.
Definitely.
Of course, well, they are.
Okay.
You are.
All right, liaison reports, I don't have mine. John. It's the word for the night.
See, we see. It's not all starting. We, yeah, there were, there was, um. No, probably isn't.
Here. Um, I just wanted to note that the council on aging, or the, at the, at the New Senior Center, there was a donor recognition event on Friday, um, that was packed, uh, we tested out the party in there, it was wonderful, and all the donors were there, and, um, the, for instance, it should, um, or building campus folks gave a big shout out to Ms. Curran and to Mr. Beethman, their leadership on trying to get that done. And it's, that's excellent, yeah, so. That was very nice of them, yeah, so I just wanted to, but it was a nice event. And I'm sorry for not attending, so I got the invitation and the timing when I was on the beach, so, yes, I did not name the board, so. Um, and. Um, actually, there's a new liaison before, the Central Harbor Advisory.
It's right.
Committee.
That is right. It's not much to.
So sharp.
Right.
You're sharp.
We have the first meeting, and the second meeting is already in two days.
Yes.
On Thursday.
It's on it?
Yeah, it's on.
It's on it, so that's.
Rock and roll.
Yeah, can you put it on the email list, if it's sent out, whatever? Yeah. He's, he's a Mr. Organization.
They do, right, ninety days, we're going for it.
Yeah, I think they'll give a board raise tomorrow night, so, um, you know, I mean, so that's. Stay here. So, I think correspondence, we have some.
I will be brief. Uh, here's some CARES Act dis, uh, disbursement money that Nancy provided, which is wonderful, there's three different correspondence from Secret Point. Um, I think one of the most interesting, uh, thanking Congress at lunch for coming out, also, it's our reward, uh, engineers for the work that they've been doing. There's also, though, what I think is kind of new information, different topic, the South Shore Irish Heritage Trail. All starting in May, uh, next year, there's gonna be the ribbon cutting, website launch, they are getting ready to rock and roll, and get going for next year, so get ready, a lot of great plans planned. So that's, that's really good, and then, let's do, yeah, press release. On, excuse me, I'm gonna skip to the baseball field, again, just the, uh, recommended for us to, to take action on the old gates field.
And then the grant report, did you have that? Oh, that was the, I used to get confused between that and the. Oklahoma County cares, Oklahoma County stuff, that's a different.
Yes.
But she. It shows all the different grant amounts that we receive.
Page one oh seven, or back up, yes, it's all the.
People used to ask all the time, why don't apply for grants, so.
This is, yeah, it's, it's a.
It's a report that suggests that we do, a lot.
We do.
Is this your day, Nancy, two point four million?
Yeah, you could run January or December.
Okay.
But the CARES Act is a, a quick portion of that.
Oh, that's that. So take like eight million dollars since January first, twenty twenty-one, thank you, and to all the staff that take the time to write and submit applications for that money. So a lot of work, yeah, it's a lot of work, just one minute. Anything else the board needs to say before we approve the meeting minutes?
I just want to thank our board members for representing this so well in the court of law tournament.
I guess the chair here directs our alternate.
Good job, Karen.
They did an excellent job. I'm happy to cheer them on. Right, uh, do you like the motion to the meeting minutes? To accept the meeting minutes for the select ward meeting held on September twenty-first, twenty twenty-one, and the meeting held on September twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-one? Second, second by Ms. Canfield, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries five zero, motion returned, so.
Motion returned, sign Jack, please.
Thank you. Second, second by Ms. Curran. All in favor of? Yes, thank you for all the patience. I'll have to purchase this one.
I'm studying, right, for the future, no. I'm gonna watch it anyway. I get you already, right, why not just hang out?